Call the meeting to order. Good morning, everybody. Item number two is additions to the agenda. Does any councillor have any additions they wish to? Hearing none. Just take the item number three then is the approval of the agenda as presented. Okay, everybody's fine with that. Item number four is the declaration of any conflict of interest. Does any councillor see any conflict of interest at this time? If so, if you could mention it. If not, if an item does come up for discussion and you feel there is a conflict, please declare it at that time. Item number five is presentations. And our first presentation this morning, 5.1, is by Kathleen DeAntremont Mooney and Rob Stevenson, Immigration Service Association of Nova Scotia. So if both Kathleen and Rob would introduce themselves, I'd appreciate it and then go forward with their presentation.
Thank you. We've decided that I will do my presentation first and then after that, Rob will follow with his. Am I okay for sound? Everybody okay for... Am I speaking loud enough?
I can hear, I'm good.
All right, okay. So I work as an onboarding employer engager for ISAN's Immigrant Services Association of Nova Scotia. And I cover the three counties, Shelburne, Digby and Yarmouth. And what we do is we visit business owners and find out what their human resources needs are. And if they are not able to find people locally, we try to help them with the immigration process. So ISAN's head office is based in Halifax. There they have close to 300 people full-time working. And they speak a total of about 65 languages. So it's a really big nonprofit organization. They also have a lot of people who deliver trainer, training and language courses, skills development, all kinds of things on contracts. So a total of about 1,000 people actually work at ISAN's. So what we deliver is a variety of programs and services to help employers. One is called the Atlantic Immigration Pilot Project. And that's the project or the role that Rob takes on. So I will let him explain all the details of that one. It's the primary kind of, I guess, immigration stream that we are using with for employers. Once a candidate has been recruited, ISAN's can help with what is called the settlement process. So that's where ISAN's staff will connect with that, the new recruit, from a distance and try to find out a little bit more about them to help them immigrate here to Canada. So they look at things such as, you know, do they know what winter is? Are they prepared to move here? Do they know where they're coming? Do they have transportation to get to Yarmouth? Do they have a family that wants to come along? Do they have kids that need to go to school? So they look at all these things. So ISAN's helps with that. Again, Rob will tell you more about that immigration pilot project that he's responsible for. ISAN's has another service called Skills Match. It's a program. So what that does is there in Nova Scotia, there are about 300 people, immigrants, who are living in Nova Scotia already here on the ground, who are registered in the database called Skills Match. And before COVID, very much like the Nova Scotia Works offices across the province, these people, these individuals would go meet with their employment councillors at the ISAN's office and try to find work. So the councillors would match them up with the jobs that are in the database. So we would like to try to encourage the immigrants that are mostly around the HRM area to immigrate maybe and move towards the rural communities. And so for the next year, I think that ISAN's is going to put a little bit more emphasis on trying to get us, get that started. So we need to provide tour bus tours and things like that so that they actually know the rest of the province. The other service that we can provide is called an onsite recruitment and information session. So again, pre-COVID, what that would look like is in Halifax, they do them all the time. So they have larger employers such as banks or call centers. And they actually come to the office and do a presentation about their business and about the job opportunities. Again, the ISAN staff, working with all these individuals who are looking for work, will find the individuals who have banking skills, for example, and invite them to these sessions. So sort of like a mini job fair for one employer. These can be done rurally too. And something that we are in discussions with, there could be a few larger employers here who would like to do that. Again, it might involve bringing the immigrants from HRM to an event here or connecting them virtually by Zoom like we're doing today. We have a professional mentorship program. And what that does is it connects professionals of some sorts. It could be a profession like accounting and a chartered accountant, an engineer. It could be a trade. It could be accountant, lawyer, any profession. And it connects them with another professional who's already working in that field in Nova Scotia. And they are able to mentor them and maybe go through the differences of how things are done here from where they used to practice. ISAN's also has a service where they help these individuals get licensed to practice in Canada. So that's another service they offer at the ISAN's office. There's a professional mentorship program and a professional practice program. They're very similar, but one involves six weeks of actual work placement with one a firm somewhere else. And at the end of those six weeks, the firm may choose to hire them or they're not required to. So it could be a positive outcome that way. Another program that ISAN's offers is called the Workplace Culture Program. And what that is, is basically training for employees or, I guess, education around workplace culture, what that means, how to prepare your workplace to make sure that the immigrants that you've actually hired are able to stay on and you're actually able to retain them. So focusing on the retention piece, how the group will get along and things like that. I did not talk about the Temporary Foreign Worker Program, but I'm going to just briefly because it's really the most used program for immigration. In Nova Scotia, our fisheries are using it a lot. And it's not unfortunately a program that we get involved in that much. And the reason is, I think, the government is focusing and putting money in the programs that will bring immigrants here who are going to stay. And so we want immigrants not only to come for a short time, but actually to stay. The great thing is that in some cases, some of these temporary foreign workers are transitioning into full-time employment after several years. And that's where, again, the Atlantic Immigration Pilot Project can come in to try to get them in into a permanent residency. So the temporary foreign worker is the one that you hear the most about. Again, fish plants, mostly manufacturing in Canada, farms. We have a lot of them around here. And it's a really good program. Mostly the fish plants or these companies that hire them work with immigration brokers and lawyers, and that's how it's done. So it's kind of a, the broker might come from a specific country and go recruit people and bring them back here. One program that I want to inform you about, although the person is not here to present, but another service we have here in the area, which is great and all across the province, is the Y Reach Program. And it's funded by, actually, I'm not sure which level of government. I think it's the IRCC, Immigration Federal. But it's administered through the YMCA's here. And in Yarmouth, Dolores Atwood is the person who's responsible for that program. And she works with the individuals, with the immigrants who are already here, helping them in any way, if they need advice or support or anything that they might need. So she's here on the ground. So that's a summary of the ISAN's services. And I'll let Rob take over from here to go more in depth about the Atlantic Immigration Pilot Project.
Thanks Kathleen. Maybe Victoria, could we try running the slideshow? I'm with the Western RIN. I'm with Angelique here. I was, I've been with the Western RIN since the end of October, where I took over as the Atlantic Immigration Pilot Program Manager. And I've been a manager up until the end of March. And right now, I'm interim manager while we're hiring a replacement for me. I've since moved on to business retention and expansion for the RIN. But I'm still involved in AIP until we get a new person in, which should be in the next few weeks. So just a bit on what the Atlantic Immigration Program is, formerly called the Atlantic Immigration Pilot Program. It helps to bring workers, foreign workers, to the community. And it fast-tracks them on their way to becoming permanent residents in Canada. We have, as Kathleen mentioned, a lot of companies that are bringing in many foreign workers on a temporary foreign worker basis. And this is helping those workers to settle here, bring their families, start a new life in Canada. So the AIP is a nomination program, which is run by the province. And the advantage of using the Atlantic Immigration Program or the AIP is to reduce the application time for the foreign worker for permanent residency from what's typically one to two years down to six months. It's a fast track for permanent residency, basically is what it is. The objective is to help, basically, these temporary workers that come year after year for six or eight or 10 or 12 months to become permanent residents, bring their family here and set down roots. It helps employers find scarce skilled and semi-skilled workers to work for them and to integrate the workers into the community so that they're, so that they're not having to go back every year to their home countries. Now, next slide, please. The AIP is a program that's administered out of the Nova Scotia Office of Administration in conjunction with ACOA and with ACOA funding. And it works with the RINs across the province to promote the program and to help companies get set up and designated in the program. As I said, we have a full-time manager. We started the program in 2017 in the Western RIN. And this will continue on going forward. The Western RIN, in case any of you may not happen to know, includes the municipalities of Barrington, Argyle, Yarmouth, Clare, Digby, as well as the towns of Yarmouth and Digby. Next slide, please, Victoria. There are three main steps to becoming, to joining the AIP program and allowing a fast track for the employees. The company number one becomes a designated employer by filling out an application form and sending that into Nova Scotia Office of Immigration. Once the employer is designated and is approved, you can advertise the specific position that they're hiring for. They find the worker or identify the worker through interviews, references, resumes, and they make a decision and offer the job to the foreign worker. Foreign workers only selected when a suitable worker, a suitable Canadian cannot be found to fill the job. Once a foreign worker is found to fill the job, an endorsement application is formed. An endorsement is basically saying, the employer's saying, "We endorse this applicant, this worker, to come and work for us in Canada under the AIP program." And from there, once the endorsement is approved by the NSOI, the worker can apply with the endorsement to the federal government, to immigration, and request permanent citizenship or permanent residency. And this will be fast-tracked because he's been endorsed by the province. Next slide, please, Victoria. So how have we done in the last three years? The, working with the RIN, we've been out promoting the AIP. We see it as very positive for the, for the demographics of the area to bring in workers of all types. Right now, there are a total of 34 designated employers in Yarmouth County, 20 in Digby County, nine in Shelburne County, for a total of 63 employers who've been approved as designated employers, plus there are another 15 employers that we've gotten recently who haven't yet been approved for designation. So in total, there are 78 companies, once you include those that have applied that haven't received approval yet, active in the AIP program, which is a fairly significant number. Next slide, please, Victoria. So if you look at 78 AIP employers, and the employers list in their designation application how many employees they're looking to hire and what types of positions. From this, we're estimating a total of some 200-plus foreign workers. Okay, that's more or less the number of positions that we've had applied for during the designation process. Under the AIP, as I was saying, with immigration, these foreign workers can bring their immediate families with them, their spouses and children to come along to become, and they all become permanent residents under the AIP. So overall, we're considering that from a total of 200-plus potential workers coming to Nova Scotia in the next year or two, this represents an arrival of some 400 to 600 newcomers into Western Nova Scotia between Barrington and Digby. So it's quite significant. Next slide, please, Victoria. So with this amount of potential newcomers, community leaders should be considering settlement of these newcomers into the community as much as possible. We need to make newcomers feel welcome, to help them integrate into community life, to invite them to join in community activities. And we should consider also implications around different factors in the community like housing, schools, transportation, getting service clubs, perhaps to open up, and churches as well to them wherever possible. As community leaders, it's important to foster a good, positive attitude toward newcomers in the community. Next slide, please, Victoria. Immigrants that are coming to Canada, they represent, number one, a way for us to offset the demographic evolution of the area. Any outmigration, any aging demographic where people are retiring, and overall, the shortage of workers, particularly skilled and semi-skilled workers. They bring new ideas and a positive attitude. They're coming to Canada to build a new life for their family. And it's a very, very positive experience for a region in most cases. And with the thought of supporting our newcomers coming into the region, the Western RIN is in the process of developing a zonal immigration partnership project that will focus more on attracting, retaining and helping immigrants to integrate into the community more. It's, this type of partnership or project has been done in many regions across the country to a great deal of success. So right now, we're in the feasibility study phase of that project here at the RIN. So, and I think that's pretty well it. I'll just add that the AIP is focused on skilled and semi-skilled workers and not on unskilled workers. So we're talking about a C level and above. So in my work in the AIP, there is a lot of interest in skilled trades in particular, be they carpenters, electricians, plumbers, welders, machinists, fiberglassers, as well as seafood processing workers, which are skilled trade as well, they're not general labor. So it's, there is a very good fit for Western Nova Scotia with the AIP program. And that's it for my presentation. I'm happy to take any questions.
Kathleen and Rob, thank you very much for your presentation. Well received. Do any of the councillors have questions at this time? Councillor Quishen, you have the floor. And then Councillor Cunningham, after.
Yes, I think the program is very, what's the word I'm looking for? You're moving along at a good pace and it seems like there's a lot of interest from the employers and whatnot. So thanks for all your work you're doing and keep up the good work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councillor Cunningham, go ahead.
Yes, thanks, Rob and Kathleen, for a wonderful presentation. I was impressed with the growth that the immigration program has.
You've cut out.
I'm holding forward to... Pardon me?
You've cut out.
Oh, did I cut out? Okay, my apologies, yeah. Unstable internet. Any event, just really impressed with the program and the numbers are growing and it's important for our demographic health here in Western Nova Scotia. So I mean, anything we can do to enhance, make newcomers, you know, more welcome and more integrated would be very much, you know, if you know of any things, any actions we can take, please let us know. Thank you.
Councillor Durkey, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thanks, Rob and Kathleen. I have a question for you. With the imminent closure of the YMCA, does that mean that we are going to lose the Y Reach Program?
I haven't, I haven't asked Dolores yet what she thinks about that, but I would doubt it. I think the administration could be done from another YMCA, for example. The rest of the year, many of us don't know if we're actually leaving their home, our homes, and actually traveling to meet with people. So it becomes less and less important where you are, you know? So I'm just, I don't know the answer, but I'm guessing that probably the administration could be done from another Y. I will check.
Thank you very much.
And I know, just to add to that, that the Western RIN is reaching out to the Y and they do have a call in through them. And they have been in touch over this and discussions are happening there to take a look at the path forward, so.
That's great to hear, Rob, thank you.
Is there any further questions? If not, I have a couple of questions. And I'm not sure who will answer them or who can answer them. Is, when you say immigrants and so on, first thing that comes to mind is language barriers. Are the immigrants that wish to come or a skilled immigrant that wishes to come, do they have to know English? I'm not saying as well as, as all get out, but do they have to know English in order to participate?
I'll let Rob answer for the AIP and then I'll answer from my perspective.
Yeah, for the AIP, the Atlantic Immigration Program, immigrants have to have a Level 4 English. So basically, a strong intermediate level of English. And if they have a Level 4, they need to be working toward a Level 5 and they're giving a grace period of about a year, one to two years to achieve a Level 5. So yes, they do need that. In addition to the language level, they also need to have an education level that corresponds to the NAIC or NOC job classification. Pardon me. So both of those are reviewed by Nova Scotia Office of Immigration prior to the approval of the endorsement. So they have to have education and English in the case of Nova Scotia.
So yes, so that was for the AIP. The temporary foreign workers come here with various levels of English or, you know, and very sketchy English. ISAN's does provide English language training classes and also the Y Reach Program offers them. So there is availability. It takes them quite a long time. So just give you an example, is I know a restaurant owner now who wants to hire several, maybe six, probably next year after COVID, after things return to normal. His stable business, he wants to get about six people from Vietnam here. And they've completed everything. The only thing, the barrier for them is they can't get their Level 4. So they're still back there, but they won't be temporary foreign workers. They'll come on the AIP, but that's stalling them. But the temporary foreign workers can actually go through the classes while they're here and it sometimes takes years. I know another company now who's in the process of trying to get some to stay. So they go back home, they return, they go back home, they return. They might have been doing this for three or four years already and they have two or three selected that they want to keep full-time. And so it takes a long time for these people to actually learn English well enough to stay.
Okay, my second question, and municipalities can help in an indirect way, but when you said that within the next couple of years, between 200 workers, family members, between 400 to 600. I was thinking, okay, if, I know if I went out today and was looking for an apartment for myself and my wife, I could probably find something. Now, if I had a family and so on, housing and transportation must be an issue that they ask because when they arrive here, they don't have capital, I assume, to go and buy a car. They don't have driver's license for Nova Scotia and so on. How does that all work into the picture and how might municipal units help? We can't go and build apartment buildings in random. That's not a service of municipal units. So how can we help or inspire developers to do this kind of work?
That's a good question. Go ahead, Rob, yeah.
Okay. Yeah, housing has been a very key point of discussion, particularly prior to COVID. And I'll just mention that the immigration interest in the AIP program, it was tamped down a bit by COVID, but in the last three to four weeks, it has become very active and very much in demand again. By, it was quite surprising to me, the level of interest in hiring foreign workers over the past three or four weeks. But aside from that, we've had many discussions, Kathleen and I and a number of other people in the community about housing. Housing is a, is a big issue. If you think of some of the larger employers of foreign workers, both temporary and permanent, I'm thinking of the ones up the bay. They're actively buying and building houses for their workers. They actively have their own buses on the road, bringing workers in from the towns like Digby and Yarmouth there. So yes, it is, it's very much a center, a central issue in, in bringing immigrants in. So I, I just think that it's very important to to illustrate the numbers of people that employers want to bring as permanent residents over the next year or two because we use a two-year projection with employers when we sign them up for designation. Important to illustrate those numbers so that folks like you can bear in mind that, that this number of immigrants are quite likely to be coming. And, you know, you can, you can make your thoughts accordingly as to, as to what we can do. It is very positive for the region, but yes, housing is, is a bit of an issue here.
Yeah.
When an employer hires a foreign worker, they're asked to give the, to help out in the settlement plan, which means help the person find a place to live, like an apartment or a house to rent. So that's, that's basically what they do. But yeah, it is very important for, for someone like a municipal councillor to keep in mind that we are planning to see an influx of immigrants over the next couple of years.
So ju- just to, just add a little bit more to what Rob said is with the temporary foreign workers that most of the fish plants are, are hiring, the business is lucrative enough that they can afford to provide housing and buy, build and buy older homes, renovate, put properties right on their, their land. And so that's what they've been doing. So it's working well for them. But we also meet with smaller businesses that have a desperate need, maybe a restaurant where you can't find cooks lately. You just can't find people who want to work in the restaurant business. And so they're not quite as big and they don't have a big budget. So it's limiting for, for people like that or businesses like that, the smaller businesses who have a need as well. And here in Yarmouth, we're actually fortunate that we have way more housing than, say, the Clare region or Barrington. Barrington, I've met with employers there that have a need. They're looking at it and saying, yeah, I, I would take two or three right now, but there's no, there's no apartments. There's zero vacancy in, in Barrington, zero. And it's, it's like that a lot there. So that's, you know, all, I think all across the tri-counties, we have a shortage of, of apartments, housing and transportation, which will be barriers.
Okay, I, I thank you for the answers. I could probably ask another few questions pertaining to that and so on because we are in need of skilled workers and so on. But I think that's for another discussion further down, down the road. Please keep in contact with the CIO if things do come up and so on, where the municipality might be or could be of assistance in doing, doing or helping out and so on in that respect. Was there any further questions from any of the councillors? See, seeing none. Again, Kathleen and Rob, thank you very much for your presentation and enjoy your day, the, the rest of the day.
All right. Thanks very much.
Councillors, the next item on the agenda is 5.2. It is Cape Frishu. And we have some, some people on, on the screen that, I, I know their names, but I'm not familiar with them. So what I'm going to ask them to do is introduce themselves. I guess it would be Mike, Trevor and Sue, if you'd give a little detail, please. Who you are and what you are, excuse me, and who you're with, excuse me, who you're with. Any order. Mike, you want to start or Trevor?
I'm, I'm Mike Cunningham and, and I was on the, the steering committee, Cape Frishu resident.
Thank you, Mike. Trevor?
So I'm Trevor Hume. I am a planning consultant with EDM Planning Services. And with me today, I have Margot Young, who is Principal of EDM and was heavily involved in the, she's a senior planner, heavily involved in the development of Master Plan.
I'm Sue Matthew, Economic Planning Group. I'm a tourism specialist and I was part of the consulting team for the Master Plan.
Okay, so there we have, go ahead, Victoria.
Mr. Chair, I'd also like to welcome Neil McKenzie to the meeting. Neil also participated in the steering committee.
Okay, yes, I see. Okay, I'm sorry, you're down in the far corner of my screen. I didn't see you.
And maybe I should point out, Mr. Chairman, just for the record, that the other members of the steering committee representing council were councillor Lauren Cushing and representing the board of the Yarmouth Area Tourism Association, happens to be our councillor Gerard LeBlanc.
Okay, okay, yeah, and Gerard's there. Okay, I see. So I guess I'll open the floor to the presentation, I take it, Victoria? So whoever wants to take the lead on that?
Sure. So I will share my screen now. So it's Trevor. All right, Mr. Warden, Deputy Warden, members of council, staff, members of the public, thank you very much for having us today. We're very excited to present the Cape Frishu comprehensive master plan to you this morning. I know we've introduced our team members that are here with us on the Zoom call. I do want to point out those that aren't here with us today. We had the PR Hive and Heather Hanson, who provided consultation, expertise and, and communications advice. We had SNC Lavlin for engineering support and we had Robert Mellon, who is a senior architect and recently I think he's, he's retired from McGill and his specialty is cultural landscapes. So we'll move on to a little agenda here. So we'll, we'll spend a couple of minutes just going through the steps that we used to develop the master plan. Just as review, we'll spend a whole lot of time, but I think it's important to, to just go through that for a minute. And then we'll talk a little bit about something called vision, essence, statement and values. More on that to come. And then we'll go into the master plan. And then I'll turn things over primarily to Sue for the visitor experience strategy and elements. And then I guess we'll have some discussion and questions if time allows. I will say too that Margot and Sue will be co-presenting with me today and will be interjecting as needed. So I know you're all intimately familiar with Cape Frishu, but thought it just useful to take a, a minute or two here just to make sure we're all using terms that everybody understands. So obviously the, I won't spend a lot of time, but the, the map on the, on the left hand part of your screen is the, the community of Cape Frishu, starting basically at the Fisherman Park up here, down through the bar and then Markland States area over here. And this is the lighthouse property. And that's the focus of our master plan. So on the right-hand side of your screen is just a zoom in of fairly recent air photo. And to orient you here, this is the road into the light. At the lower garage and parking area here, that leads into the turning circle for RVs and buses down here. We have our parking area, Wensel House here, which was, is used primarily right now for staff. We have the upper garage that's up here and associated parking. And then we have the, the driveway up to the Keeper's House, the Lighthouse and the Fog Alarm Building. And we're going to refer to those collectively as the Light Station. This, of course, is Lee Ferrexon Park down in this area. So the steps for developing the master plan, this is pretty, pretty consistent with the RFP and our, and our proposal, but I just want to go through a couple of points in each of these. We started off last fall reviewing quite a, quite a volume of background material provided by the municipality for YASTA, the municipal heritage documents from culture and heritage, because it is a registered heritage property. We also conducted a number of site visits. We had three site visits, an informal one in September and two more formal site visits in January and February of this year. And that involved engineers, planners, the design team, folks from the, from the public, Public Works, first responders, et cetera. Quite a number of folks took, took part in those site visits. We had a stakeholder consultation process, which I'll, I'll delve into in a little bit more detail on the, on the next slide or two. We also conducted, as part of the site visits, really, site and infrastructure needs assessment, which involved just a general assessment of the condition of the site and what's, what's there currently. And thanks to, to Public Works in particular at the municipality for providing a lot of relevant information there. As part of Sue's portion of the project, of course, we conducted a tourism sector assessment, market analysis and that involved reviewing quite a, quite a number of documents and interviewing folks, things like that, including provincial tourism. We also developed this thing called a vision, essence, statement and values, which we've done a number of times. And again, I'll really, we'll get into those in detail in a, in a few slides, but these are the defining statements that come out of the consultation, the review of the background material and, and also from the site visit that help us define what is this place, Cape Frishu, very specifically now and into the future. We then prepared visitor experience strategy and identifying experience elements. And those were key and they fit in, interlocked with the vision, essence, statement and values. Because we want the experiences that we're proposing in the master plan to not only fit what the market will support, but also what, what the essence of the place is. That led us into Design Week. We were on the ground in February, February 24th to the 28th and got to see Cape Frishu in calm and stormy weather. It was really a wonderful experience. Design Week is something we've done a few times. It's, it's a way for us to stage ourselves on the site and develop the plan right there. And it enables stakeholders and members of the public, council members, interested people to come and see that design process unfold. And that was very successful and we're very, very happy that municipality were able, were able to allow us to stage out a Wensel House. There's, there's nothing quite like, like developing that right on the site you're, you're drawing. And that led us to preparing the master plan. Out of that, we had, out of Design Week, we had some hand-drawn plans and we then came back and refined those and have had discussions with the staff and with the steering committee. And we're now at the position where we're here in front of you folks at council to bring you up to speed on, on what we've, what we've put together. Sue or Margot, anything to add?
No, I think you covered it, Trevor.
So a key component of, of the consultation process was direct conversations with residents and community stakeholders that, that work and visit at Cape Frishu often. And we had a number of sessions, both in January and during Design Week again in February, with tourism and business operators. We had a drop-in session for those who could make it from municipal council and municipal planning advisory committee members. We had quite a number of folks representing heritage interests, including, Mike is, Mike is with us today and, and other folks, including, including past and present members of the Friends of the Light, the Yarmouth County Museum and others. And of course, the residents. We had a workshop with the residents, which I'll talk about in some detail in a minute. And also some dedicated, a dedicated section for the residents again during Design Week. We had a general public session at Mariners Centre during Design Week as well. And we had, throughout the Design Week, we had sections of the day that were dedicated to different themes. So tourism, public works, first responders and heritage and, and engineering as well. So I just want to speak for a couple of minutes on the residents. All good? The residents' session, as they are probably, in, in my view, the, the most impacted by what we're proposing and what goes on currently at, at the Cape. They provided great input at the workshop we held with them in January. And so on the left-hand part of your screen, you can see a map we made out of that workshop. And they identified, we asked them to identify opportunities and challenges facing the community and, and more specifically, the, the property that the municipality owns. And they came up with a, a, a large number of, of opportunities and those are in green on that, on that map. And I apologize if it's not legible, but I'll, I'll call out a few, a few things that came out not only with residents, but were, were common for what we heard from other stakeholder groups. Climbing the lighthouse, expanding interpretation and experiences at Lee Ferrexon Park, outdoor activities like hiking, picnics, birding, experiencing the, the nature of the site. And of course, the ability and, and opportunity to experience and be educated on the history and culture of the site and, and guided tours. And there were, as you can see in blue, there were, there were a few challenges that were identified. A number of them were, were off, off the, the, the actual property that it's our focus, but we wanted to document that information. And I don't think it would be any surprise to anyone here to, to note that they primarily related to traffic concerns and garbage and that sort of, that sort of activity. Anything to add, Sue?
Nope.
So vision, essence and values. So actually, before we get there, I skipped the page. Sorry, stuck together. We'll talk just briefly the other communication initiatives that we undertook. We had the Cape Frishu Master Plan webpage, which the municipality hosted. We had a designated project email and telephone. And thanks to municipal staff for, for making that happen. A number of meetings with key individuals and groups, email briefings. We took online submissions for folks who couldn't make it to any of the in-person sessions. We had a social media campaign that I know the municipality and the PR Hive worked together on. And also traditional media, we advertised on the radio and in the Vanguard. And there's an example on the, on the right of one of, one of the PR, PR Hive's tweets. It's Heather Hanson's eyeball there that you can see anyway. So vision, essence and values. So the, these three elements work together to help us really understand what the site has been, what it is now and what it should be in future. And we generally develop that through our, all of the steps we, we undertook to get to this point. But it's, it's historical background, it's input from stakeholders and it's also based on our own observations when we get there. But most importantly, it's community, community preference. And so I'm going to read the vision here. "A raw and natural landscape that awakens all senses. Ocean, rock and sky, abundant and beautiful, reflective of the area's natural and cultural history and the traditions of generations of people. Cape Frishu honoring the past, keepers of the light that continues to shine today." And this should provide a guide not only for us in developing the master plan, but also for for council down the road. The essence, I know it's a bit long, but it's important, and I'm going to read through it. "Cape for Shoe, a rugged and beautiful landscape adorned by a curious apple core lighthouse that after hundreds of years still guides vessels into the working Yarmouth Harbor. This rocky jet into the Atlantic Ocean is a beacon for its people and all who journey here. It is a true maritime settlement with abundant nature, an endless ocean that catches the magnificent sun at dusk, only to offer up incredible star-filled skies. Even when the fog rolls in or when the wind blows fiercely, the constant crashing of the waves is awesome and soothing. Cape for Shoe is a land with history and tradition that continues today. Surrounded by a thriving lobster fishery, generations of people still live on the lands and uphold the heritage and stories of their ancestors. Catching and delivering seafood to the world to enjoy. Visit the lighthouse, look inside, explore the rocks, hike the trails, watch and listen to thousands of birds on their migratory path, or simply just sit, breathe, and be." And then the values. Authentic, truly reflective of the natural and cultural heritage of Cape for Shoe. Sustainable, recognizes, respects, and protects the environment of Cape for Shoe and consider it a long-term financial sustainability. Quality-compelling experiences, visitor experiences that strive to establish Cape for Shoe as a world-class tourism destination, providing memorable benefits to visitors. Appealing to residents and tourists. Considered of the interests and expectations of Cape for Shoe residents, regional residents, and visitors to the area. And finally, accessible, provides a selection of experiences for visitors of varying physical, economic, and social situations. Now, why are these important? There will be pressure, once the master plan is implemented, down the road, to have Cape for Shoe be all things to everyone. And in considering what happens at Cape for Shoe in the future, assuming you adopt the master plan, future activities, displays, events should speak to in some way these three elements. It's a, it's a good rule stick by which to assess, is this something that should be at Cape for Shoe, that we want at Cape for Shoe, and does it fit with what we thought we wanted there? Margot, did you want to add anything to that?
Just have one quick comment, Trevor. That's important that these, these appeal to not only experiences that offered by the municipality, but as well as all those that might be offered by the private sector, by other not-for-profit groups that come onto the site, and by all users. These really appeal to everybody that has any, anything to do with Cape for Shoe going forward.
Thanks for that, Sue. It's an important point. So, with that, I hope we've set the table now for the, I guess, the exciting bit, hopefully exciting. We're going to move right into the master plan now. And on, don't worry, we're going to, we're going to dig in. There's a, there's a map on your left hand side of the screen there that is hard to read. That's okay. We're going to, we're going to zoom into the various bits and pieces here in a minute. But we thought we'd begin by doing a little bit of an overview of the site, and I'm going to turn that over to Margot in a moment. We've got it separated into three areas, and we, we're going to be presenting it in suggested phases. We've broken it down into six to allow for better ease for funding applications and the like. But I do want to point out that the order that we're presenting them in is our suggested order, but there's, with the exception of one or two things, there is no engineering reason why anything has to be before another. There's no, there's no hardened fast rule there. So with that, I'll hand it over to Margot.
Hi, thank you for having us here today. I want to just give you a little bit of an overview of the overall master plan, and then services will go into the details of the individual elements. A master plan, which is, you know, which is our main project, is actually a collection of ideas, and a really important part of it is how they're organized on the site so that they're legible and they read together as a set, and the whole experience works together and flows together.
Excuse me, excuse me, can, can everybody hear Margot good? I was going to suggest, could you move a little closer to the...
We're going to do our social distancing here.
We'll swap spots. Can you hear me better now?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, thank you. So, we were tasked with developing a world-class site for you. That was really the, the key thing that was in the terms of reference. And so, in Trevor outlining the vision, the point of a world-class site, obviously, is it has to achieve a very high level of consistency, and it has to execute on that vision in a very legible way. And so, we have the site, the overall master plan, organized into three really key locations of three years, and I just want to kind of talk about those first. Number one is the light station, and those elements at the light station are about the interpretation, all the vision and essence elements, interpreting the cultural history of this area, and in particular, the history of that light. That's its key focus. And so, what we're doing in there, in that area with most of the projects, is actually kind of stripping away and pulling out all of the kind of modern elements that interfere with, you know, being able to truly understand and interpret and put yourself in the place of a light keeper a number of years ago and even in the current day. So, that is what we're working with on that site in terms of how we organize the light station itself. And so, we're really wanting to make sure that we're able to do that. And that means in terms of orientation, that a lot of the stuff that we would classify more as back-of-house, where you get your gifts, where you might get a snack, have been moved back to area number three. Area number two, then, is the secondary interpretive elements of the site, and that is the location where all the projects were about enhancing the ability to interpret the natural cultural heritage, I'm sorry, the natural history of that site. So, rocks, wetlands, birds, all of those elements, that is where we want to make sure we're interpreting those elements. And then, there is actually a connection or a walk between the two that is through the rocks, so we can really experience and understand the rocks and interpret that as well. The third area, then, is the back-of-house items, and those are pushed back from the site where you can actually sit in a restaurant and now view the site, because you came there to see the lighthouse. So, we place you in locations to best view the interpretive elements. And so, that's, you know, as we go through the details, that's the big picture. I also want to say, I mean, Trevor went through the vision quite carefully. There, this site is what Sue and her world would call the hook. This is the site where we want to make sure tourists are so excited they want to come here. But then, what we want to do from the site is orient them to other places. So, we want to do it incredibly well. The light station itself has to be done exquisitely, but from here, we want to almost whet the appetite of folks so that they say, okay, we're going to stop and see that Cape for Shoe light, because we've heard about how wonderful it is, and because we're spending the night now that we've decided to stay, we're going to stop at the Acadian Village on the way back, or we're going to actually on our way back, experience the dark sky, because we got to just whet our appetite at this site. So, while it's authentic to its core mission and has to do that well, we also want to make sure that we're at all times orienting people to other sites to build the overall tourism in the area of Cape for Shoe. Sue, do you have anything else to add to that?
No, I think you've covered it very well.
I will back away.
Don't want to make Dr. Strang unhappy with me here. All right. So, thank you, Margot. So now, we'll delve into the individual projects, and we've assembled these into our digestible pieces, I guess, that we can, we can look at. Number one is climbing the Cape for Shoe light. This is something that is not very common, is very exciting, and certainly sets Cape for Shoe apart from most lighthouses around North America. You have the opportunity here with a, with a lighthouse in really good condition to actually bring people in a guided way to the top of the lighthouse. So, this project is all about what it would take to do that, and we're not suggesting a free-for-all where you unlock the bottom and just let everybody dash to the top. This requires a few things to happen, and maybe Sue can talk about, about those in a minute. But I'll go through the nuts and bolts of what's, what's included in this project. So, we have our structural engineers on the team, and when they were out on their site visit, they suggested that they conduct a structural study of all three buildings in the light station. So, the Keeper's House, which is this building, the Lighthouse, and the Fog Alarm Building is this one here. Just to get a baseline of where we are, mainly from the foundation and condition, I don't have to tell you, it's a pretty harsh environment out there, and we want to, before we start developing things, we want to make sure we have a good solid base that we're working on, even with the buildings being maintained and in good visual condition. The other piece that is included in this phase is a, is a study to look at the required code and staircase upgrades. So, anybody who's been up the light, and I've been up a number of times now, it, it remains, well, an eye-opening experience on the way up and down for anyone who might mind staircases are moving in circles or heights or any of those things. And we want to make sure that we're up to safety code as well. The, we also want to make sure that the structural steel elements are all in good condition, and then out of that will be a report and recommendations for any repairs. So, that's mainly what's involved in this, in this phase. So, that, the end of this process, not only would you have a good baseline of what the buildings are with respect to structural integrity, you would have a, have a defined engineering and architectural program that would be needed to take people up. And we don't think that is likely a huge cost, but it will be dependent on the outcome of the, of the study. Sue, did you want to speak?
Just a couple of things. Margot mentioned hooks for attracting visitors, and this is one of the key ones, but climbing lighthouses is one of those very requested experiences that visitors to Nova Scotia and other parts of Atlantic Canada are looking for. So, this will give you something very important to differentiate the site. And as Trevor said, this would be, wouldn't be open all the time, it would have select times of each day, and a small group, maybe six, eight people at a time, would go with a guide. There would have to be some screening to ensure people had the appropriate level of physical fitness to make the climb, and there would probably have to be some sort of a waiver signed. And we'll talk a bit more about this later, but this is something that there would be a charge for to go up the light, so as to cover the cost of the guide. Thank you, Trevor.
Perfect. So, we'll move on to our, our second experience here. And this is Lee Ferriksen Park. It is a salt marsh project that we're proposing down here, along with a few things. So, in looking, to speak to the, the natural history elements that we're trying to look at down here, we, we feel that we should extend the accessible hard surface trail to allow folks with reduced mobility to actually reach the beach, not necessarily go on the beach, but get down nice and close to it. There, we think the, the current stretch of, of the beach that functions as the trail connection across in this location is almost perfect how it is, but we thought we, we were inspired by a couple of pieces of driftwood down there and thought, how wonderful would it be if we brought in some, some larger logs that could be removed during storms or what have you, and the wintertime, to provide informal seating, just to go and experience or have a, have a picnic or what have you. Behind the, the logs, we're proposing a bit of a restoration of the dune and a salt marsh in here, and a bit of excavation in this area to create some open water. We don't think that's a difficult proposition, and have a couple of islands, so they're just in the circles right now because it's just an idea, but the idea being that there would be some, some islands in this open water to allow birds to come in and, and land there. And in this way, we'd be inviting the birds that are comfortable with, with humans to visit as opposed to taking humans where birds naturally live. It's kind of the opposite of how you might think about that. On, to continue the trail on this side, depending on which way you're going around, this would be the gravel trail. We're sticking to the alignments that are, are on the ground now largely, with the addition of a couple of boardwalk sections to get you up and really into the salt marsh environment. And that, and of course, wayfinding and, and interpretation signage as well down here. So, that's the nuts and bolts. Margot, Sue, do you want to add anything?
Just one, a couple of comments. This is very, would have very strong appeal to the local and regional resident market, which is, is very important for the overall site, and also the visitors interested in nature. It enables them to get close to, to the ocean vistas, and it also helps extend the stay on the site, which is good from the point of view of creating business for the restaurant and the gift shop.
Right.
Also, one of the nice things about a constructed salt marsh for this purpose is that we don't have to worry about staying perfectly in shape in any way. If a winter storm causes this to change, that's all fine and good. In fact, part of the understanding of the site and why you might come back every year is to see how it is changing and evolving. And because we, it isn't, we're starting with basically lawn grass, and it gives us that opportunity to actually watch erosion, to watch a beach build and change, to see a salt marsh as it's in a dune as it builds and erodes, and that's all part of the experience, actually, is, is observing that.
Right, thank you for that, Margot, because it is, of course, one of the, the most exposed piece of the property, and, and the salt marsh provides that, that experience and buffer against that as well. That's, that's important. So, the, the next project that we've identified is the Fog Alarm Building Look-Off. And so, a lot of elements, especially in the, in this light station area, is about the views. And so, we wanted to provide an alternative to going up on the guided tour to the top of the light. So, what we're proposing here, you can see a couple of sketches that Robert put together. We're proposing adding a galvanized steel staircase to allow access to the roof with a tempered glass rail and a bit of reinforcing to the, have a floating, a floating surface to, to walk on, on the roof up there, and that would provide just a fantastic view. And we would have possibly some, some of those, a couple of coin-operated telescopes or binoculars up there to allow people to, to look out and watch the fishing boats and the seabirds and the seals and whales and other things you can see. And one of the things that we have to consider in the master plan is this is a heritage property, and while you will have to make a formal application to Culture and Heritage to make this happen, should you adopt this, we have run this plan preliminarily past them, and they are very happy to see the Fog Alarm Building being proposed to be used in this way. Of course, they need to see the details moving on. Sue or Margot, did you want to add anything there?
Nope.
I'd like to say that the, between the lighthouse, which offers this premium viewing experience, obviously, there'll be people who are afraid or don't want to climb the lighthouse, and so this gives us that secondary option for folks who are very comfortable climbing a cold staircase. Also, though, in front of the Fog Alarm Building itself, there is, we're proposing a wooden deck platform, and there's a photograph, the bottom right, that is the view from the front of the Fog Alarm Building. So, if you're in a chair, even if you're in a wheelchair, you can have an opportunity to go and experience this extraordinary view at Cape for Shoe. And we think by offering these three types of experiences, that this light station can become known as the best light that this light station can become known as the best light station for getting a really fabulous view for anyone, no matter their level of ability.
Right. Thank you for that, Margo. And that actually leads into the next little project perfectly, because that is the proposal to create the accessible ramp and viewing area up here. And the idea being that, once you're at the light station, you should be able, no matter your level of mobility, you should be able to maneuver anywhere in this area, including up and around the base of the light here. Once you're up here, you should be able to, if you're in a wheelchair, for example, you should be able to get all the way around here. And of course, you have some of that already with the Keeper's House in place. Sort of completing this accessibility theme, the next project that we've outlined is Rocky Ridge Walk, which I have trouble saying slowly once, five times fast is definitely a challenge. But this is a lovely experience where, right now, there is no connection between Leif Erikson Park and the light station. So if you're in either location and you want to visit the other, you have to walk all the way around and do that. This would provide a loop. So what we're proposing is not a trail per se, but a pathway, a route through the rocks with, in places where it might be hard to walk, some interventions to flatten things out. And you'd be able to get from in front of the Fog Alarm Building, make your way down. And these green areas that we've defined, they're actually existing flat areas in the rocks currently. And they provide a great spot to just sit on the rocks and have a picnic, for example, or just view. And the view from the rocks is spectacular. And I know a lot of folks climb up on them now. And this will provide a safer route through the rocks. And there'll be, there could be little markers along the way to define, sort of as you have in backcountry trails, where you can see the next marker on where you're going, the little painted rocks or other things to sort of guide you on the suggested path down through the rocks. And the important piece here too is this little pathway and staircase down to the accessible trail at Leif Erikson. Anything, really?
Yes.
So now we're getting into definitely nuts and bolts. We have an expanded parking lot proposed here. And this is to address parking needs of not only tourists and visitors, but also of local residents. So what we're proposing is a parking lot constructed where Wensel House currently is. And there is a parking lot here. We'd like to expand that out. And the ultimate size, you know, can, to be determined, it can be bigger or smaller. But the idea being that there could be a parking lot right here in this location. One of the things that I really like about this element is a lot of folks, and we saw this during the storms down there when we were there, especially during Design Week, folks would come down, local folks would drive out and come and sit down in this area and watch the storm. With this new parking lot, you're actually up a bit higher, as you can see over here. If this was all parking lot, you actually have a much better view and you're away from the salt spray a little bit here. And you're up off the roadway too. And we also thought that we're not going to touch the turn circle down here at all, but we suggested maybe some rose bushes being planted along the edge here, just to soften it up. So. Sue, anything?
Yeah, no, we're good.
Oh, yeah. And currently, there's a gate that's here. Now, there's a couple of different options. And that could be relocated down here, or it could be relocated up here. And we think up here is the preferred location for it. And this will allow public access to the parking lot. Would you want to add? Okay. Thank you for that. So the next element is right next door. And that's a purpose-built restaurant, gift shop, and washroom building. And so this will be directly linked to the parking area by a gravel trail. And you'll have a paved surface for deliveries and for folks who may not be able to maneuver on the gravel trail up to the restaurant. There's a large deck on the outside, and inside it's open. These are sketches from Robert again, scissors, trusses, large open area. So this end of the building is this end right here, just to orient you. So to come in, this is the restaurant snack bar area and gift shop. And you would have seating that spills out onto the deck. And you have the washrooms back here. And for the washrooms, we're proposing composting toilets, four of them. And we've had them at Peggy's Cove for 20 years. They function very well and are able to accommodate the volume of Peggy's Cove. And we're certainly going to be under that here. So we're confident that's a good solution and addresses some of the servicing concerns on the site with respect to sewer treatment and water.
Sue maybe wants to add too. The interesting thing about gifts is it's really wonderful if this building is at the start and finish of your visit. So having it right beside the parking lot, but elevated a little bit with a deck, so you're looking out over your cars and still can really enjoy the view, is kind of an important part of it. The site's also pulled back from the light station, so you can, from the site, look and view the light station. So you know, that's an important part of viewing, these really important places you came to see, but at the same time, not intruding on those spaces. So that the positioning of it is actually quite important. Also, if you can get to the gift station on your way back to your car, the probability of you buying something is much, much higher. And so putting it in this location should really help with using the washroom, people coming and going at the car. The stop and start is when you want to use washrooms. It's also where you might, after you walk, say, let's get a cup of tea or let's pick up a gift. So locating it beside the parking lot is really important for selling gifts.
It was exactly my point I was going to make, Margo. So but just one other comment, that this is designed with sufficient capacity to accommodate groups. So you could have a motor coach in there as well as space for individual guests. And it also would work very well for functions with the deck. So it really expands the markets available to the restaurant. And of course, it could operate throughout the year if the operator so desired.
Thank you, Sue. So this next project, we're all very excited about. So what we're proposing for the Keeper's House is an immersive experience. And I'll have, we'll talk about that in a second. On the nuts and bolts, in looking at the house, it's a duplex, as you know, and fairly cramped, not built to current codes, lots of issues around moving people, especially in the second floor of the building. And out of all of that constraint, we believe we should remove the second interior floor of the building. And the outside is protected under heritage, but the interior is not. So you're free to make changes in the interior of the building. And when Robert looked at the building plans from 1906, I think they were, they're of a construction method that makes removing of the second floor fairly straightforward. So what to do with that space? It will now be a beautiful high ceiling to propose, leaving, of course, the windows have to be left in, the exterior has to be left the same. So you'll have a large, well-lit area, and in the center of which, we're proposing an immersive experience that speaks to the history and future of Cape Forchue. And around the outside, there's a little plan here that Robert's drawn out. Immersive display in the middle. And then along the exterior walls, we would have displays of the site's heritage and artifacts in history. And we also think at this stage, we could convert the site to dark sky lighting as well. Anything to add there, Margo? Or Sue?
Yeah, I just want to speak a little bit about the immersive experience. This is really the opportunity to educate and entertain visitors to the site about the cultural heritage of not only the site, but of the whole Yarmouth area. And it would be a combination sound and video experience. Might include things such as recreated views of the Yarmouth Harbor over time from the top of the lighthouse. Something that could be changed from time to time. And these would be short, maybe 15, 20-minute experiences, so not too extensive. And the space around the outside would also provide room for some live interpretation and storytelling, which would give a chance for visitors to interact with local residents and ask questions and learn more firsthand. And that's something that's very important for the tourist visitors today, to have that opportunity to connect with locals. So all of those types of experiences would be available at this location.
I wanted to speak just a tiny bit about, you know, why that's so important in this location. In order for this to be the hook, we have to have a reliable experience that's out here. So even when it's foggy, there has to be something extraordinary in order for it to do if you're planning your vacation around going to Cape Forchue. So also, many people, because of the ferry schedule, will be here in the evening. And so we want to make sure that there's something extraordinary on the site when it's foggy, when it's raining, when it's evening. And so Trevor also mentioned, you know, maybe there's even something that starts to happen in the evenings, like at 10 o'clock, the site gets very dark. This isn't the dark sky site. Obviously, you'd be orienting to the main dark sky sites from here. But it is exquisitely beautiful if there is dark sky lighting and you're able to experience the site with stars and nighttime. And you have so many beautiful photographs already of this location that would become an experience people want. So that's why this particular experience is so important in this location. In order for it to be a hook, you had to have something wonderful 24/7.
Thank you. So now we're going to look at the connection between this new parking lot that, and restaurant, gift shop that we're proposing, and the light station. And currently, the driveway servicing the light station is quite steep. We've heard a number of tails of RVs finding their way up there and then having to back down that slope quite difficulty. So one of the things we looked at in developing the master plan is the idea of how do we connect the light station in a better way than it is currently. So we're proposing removing the existing driveway. And we've done that in this image to show you what it could look like. And to replace that driveway, we're proposing a service lane be installed, gravel, and would largely run near the existing grade. And where we have to build it up, there's a number of lovely stone walls that are on the site. And we would build it up with those and have some screening with rose bushes and things. We would also take this opportunity, since we're bringing people in here, to visit this location, which is a very popular online photograph location. And it would provide another look-off. Here's your existing first look-off that's here. And there's your third one up by the light station itself. So it would give you three opportunities to view on your way up. While this lane would be wide enough to accommodate a service vehicle, a pickup truck, for, you know, maintenance and supply and that sort of thing up here, envisioning a gate or a bollard down here that would still allow the golf cart shuttle that is operated to continue to operate and bring people with reduced mobility up here. So this is a much better grade. It's still, though, going to require the shuttle to function. But once you're here, as we pointed out before, folks will be able to make their way freely around the site. We also want to extend the path that has the stairway up in front of the light station here. So basically, you can see it coming out here in this photograph. And extend that across where the existing driveway is and connect up to this viewing area, much as it does now. So to keep that connection. This area, which is the area that you see with the parking here, will keep flat, but it'll be grassed and it'll be a good location to set up an event tent. Or say you have a wedding or something staged out of there. You have probably the only somewhat sheltered location to have that sort of thing on the site. And what this creates now, once you have all of this moved and reorganized, is this sort of natural amphitheater where you're sitting on the side of the grade and you could have performances going on here or other events on this event lawn we're calling. Anything to add, Margo?
Yeah, I think sometimes we focus on the climate experience or the main experience, which is the light station, obviously. But how you get there is really important and opportunities to view. And so that the whole experience from the moment you get out of your car is wonderful. That is what the look-up opportunities provide. And I think that there's just so many different activities that can take place on that event lawn. We've heard of graduation events that take place out there, people who have weddings. We hear funerals that take place out at Cape Forchue. And as well as just casually sitting on that, you know, sloped lawn in the sun. So, you know, it's a lovely little bowl shape that I think you'll have no end of opportunities to program.
Anything, Sue?
Just one quick thing. We didn't mention at the restaurant, but we really envision a strong takeout picnic window. And so this event's lawn would be an ideal place for people to sit and have their picnics as well as various other locations around the site.
Right. So the final project is a foodie experience. So this is a dining pavilion. It's a little bit different from what you'd think of as a restaurant. It is meant to have groups book this facility. And the idea being that the prep would be done in the restaurant facility here. But anything that's cooked would be, anything that's able to be cooked over open flames. So whether that's seafood being boiled or steaks being grilled. And then very rustic, no plumbing, no electricity, and a wood structure with just fantastic views. And this is the view you will have from this dining pavilion, looking back at the site. And one of the unique characteristics of this structure is it also has a view back towards Falls Harbor and the Yarmouth Bar. So you actually have this panoramic view from this location. So we would have a trail that would take you up to this building. Robert has it drawn quite dramatically over this cliff. And it's not quite like that when you go up to the site. But the idea being that you get this sense of being out over the rocks. You're actually, as you can see, quite a ways back from the cliff itself. But if it's built up on posts like here and it overhangs a little bit, it will just be an absolutely brilliant experience to have. Sue or Margo?
Yeah, I just want to, Nova Scotia is developing a very strong reputation as a culinary destination. And this really is building on that, appealing to some of the important target markets that tourism Nova Scotia has identified for the province. It will hopefully become a very special place as a destination, drawing people to the region, and a place for people to have their very memorable first or last night dining experience in the province.
Great. So that is our collection of projects. I'm going to turn it over to Sue now to take you through, thank you for your patience, to take you through the visitor experience strategy. Thank you, Sue.
Okay. Yes, I want to just make a few points as we talk about this. The whole strategy and the elements have been built around what Cape Forchue has in terms of what we call unique selling propositions. Those are things that differentiate it and make it very different and very special compared to other light station sites around the region. And particularly, Nova, the lighthouse itself, it's the coastal site with its rugged and expansive ocean. expansive ocean views. There's the migratory birds, the strong cultural heritage. Not just that, but the fact that we have a lot of photography and extensive personal stories that can be built on to create experiences at the site. And of course, it's also very scenic for photography. Can you move on, Trevor?
Sure.
So the overall strategy, and, and I think it's important to, to note, this is not a strategy to create another Peggy's Cove by any stretch of the imagination. What we're doing here is creating a strat, developing a strategy to create a really authentic, unique, high quality and compelling experience that will make Cape Forchue an even more special destination and give it the potential to become a world-class tourism experience. So the experiences that we've, we've identified in the master plan are sufficiently different from what is available elsewhere in, in Nova Scotia to attract visitors to the region, to the site itself and to give them exposure to what else is available to them in the whole region around Yarmouth. And the experiences have been developed, they all appeal to the specific target markets that are important to and priorities for Nova Scotia. These people are looking for nature, culture, something different, something memorable, something compelling. And we've covered all of those in the various elements of the strategy. And I, it's also important to note that everything on that list that Trevor has been through appeals to a broad market. We've got experiences for the residents, for visitors of all types, for the young and the old, for the more adventurous and for those that just want to sit and, and watch the ocean. So it reflects the vision and the essence statement that we, that Trevor presented earlier. And another very important point is we're recommending that access to the site overall continue to be free, but there will be a couple of elements that would be available for fee. And Trevor, if you can just move on to the next slide. The way we are envisioning it is that the municipality would continue to own and operate the site, have a site coordinator and the visitor services site. And that there would be two experiences, the climb, the light and the keeper's house immersive experiences, which would have a fee for them. And they would be managed through the municipality and the site coordinator. And we see that the restaurant, the gift shop and the dining pavilion would be leased to the private sector. And it's important to note that this would have to be done with some very clearly defined parameters for operations, some key performance measures and some very well set out terms of reference for the types of experiences you want to see at these facilities. So that would involve some sort of a tendering process and terms of reference and a multi-year contract with operators to deliver these experiences. So, so in terms of revenue sources for the municipality, there would of course be the admission fees from the two attractions. There would be fees from leasing out to those private operations that I just mentioned. And then groups and businesses that use the site. So if it was a wedding group or a function or a special event, we envision that there would be some fees, at least to cover the costs for the site use and for cleanup. We also think it's very important in, in respect to the concerns that we've heard about traffic, that any larger events or functions should be required to arrange for remote parking and then have a shuttle service to bring their guests to the site. All of the experiences there and the facility should have high standards of green operating practices and high standards of visitor experience and, and customer service. And this can be monitored through things such as mystery shopping, mystery shopping tests over the course of each season, which would create scores for the different experiences. And also with a regular visitor survey, one of the, somewhat of a challenge in us doing our work was the fact that we, there are no really solid, reliable visitor counts and particularly information on how many visitors are tourists versus local residents. So it's important to do a regular visitor service, survey to get a really good handle on that. And of course, ongoing coordinated marketing approach with the, the municipality and the operators working together in a coordinated effort with a, a real emphasis on social media and the digital marketing experiences. And I think, Trevor, that's the last slide, right?
It is. So with that, that is our presentation. Thank you so much and we're available to answer questions if you have.
I have a question.
Sure.
Leland, you're muted. Leland, you're muted. We can't hear you.
Well, uh.
Go ahead, Lauren.
I'm here. Yeah, I, I was wanting to make a comment. Can we get rid of the slide?
Sure. Let me see if I can get back up to full screen here. One moment, bear with me.
Yeah.
Oops. How do I stop square sharing? Here we are. One second, sorry about that. My screen is, okay. That's all. Oh, the wonders of Zoom. Can't seem to get out of it here. Oh, there we are. Stop share. There we go.
Oh, there's everyone's back. Go ahead, Counselor Christian, you have the floor.
Okay, thank you. Again, it was a great presentation. Our committee has seen it before, but I, I just can't, I just can't help how amazed I am about the, about some of the easy things that can be done there with, I think with a, a limited cost to get people in, get people more involved in going down to visit the lighthouse and area and whatnot. One thing that really impressed me was the activities of the birders. I didn't realize there were so many different birds and that, that migrated in and around that area and, and definitely it's a great, a great addition to it, right? You know, and overall, I would say the, the master plan is, is a good plan and I think we should, should pursue what we can in affordable way to try to make things happen. But I think there is some more discussion amongst our CAO and, and council and, and how we do move forward and, and, and how things should look in the future. Thank you.
You're welcome. Anybody else? Counselor, okay, counselor. Okay, I, I seen Gerard first, then Counselor Cunningham, then Counselor Durkey. Go ahead, Gerard, and then Daniel. You're muted, Gerard, go ahead. Still muted. You're still muted, Gerard. You're still muted. There you are.
Yeah. Oh boy.
Do you have your phone on or something?
No.
Okay, we'll go to Counselor, yeah, okay, that's fine. We'll go to Counselor Trevor Cunningham.
Yes, I'll, thank you for the wonderful presentation. Fantastic plan and I'm especially interested certainly in the sequence that you, you introduce those things. I think we could generate a lot of visitors from being, from that experience, being able to go to the top of the lighthouse. All good, good ideas and this won't happen overnight, but I can definitely see this morphing the, the lighthouse, Cape Forchue into a world-class destination that people from all over the world will, will come and visit and our locals will enjoy even more. So thank you so much. Excellent, excellent ideas.
Counselor Durkey?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And thank you, folks. That was very exciting and I can just visualize all of those things coming together. What is the, just wondering, what is, was the total cost or roughly, the total cost of everything?
Take myself off mute here. Yeah, the total cost to presenting it in a range, it's three and a half to four and a half million dollars, all, all in, in today's dollars.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Part of the organization of the projects is that there are some projects that take not a lot of money, we think. Like we believe the lighthouse opening that up so you can start the view and get some excitement going is a fairly inexpensive, hopefully fairly inexpensive start. And so part of the ordering of the projects was, was things that can get started fairly quickly to build momentum at the site with some of the more expensive items like the immersive experience, which is quite expensive a little further along in the process.
Counselor Allen?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to say wow, I wasn't part of this, this group. You guys have done a phenomenal job. The essence statement really resonated with me. I, I really enjoyed that. The ideas are great. I've asked, I've asked and I've been asked numerous times, if a family of four was to come to Yarmouth with young children, where do you send them? The lighthouse has always been one of the places, but the experience unfortunately right now as far, in my opinion, ends fairly quickly. And the ideas you guys have would just, I can honestly think that kids would love it, would love to walk on the rocks, would love to climbing the lighthouse. No, this has actually got me blown away a little bit, I gotta say. I'm very, very impressed. You guys did an amazing job. I want to say thank you. Thank you. I'm, I'm looking forward to, to trying to set some of these things up and get them done. So yes, thank you very much.
Again, Counselor Durkey, go ahead.
Thank you. Sorry, this is actually for Counselor LeBlanc. He would like to know if a compostable toilet be installed in the dining pavilion.
We could have that. That is an option. Certainly one could go up there. I guess we were thinking you're close enough to the, the washrooms or just a short walk down to the, the restaurant building, but where they are a compostable system, we're seeing there's no engineering reason why it couldn't be there, that's for sure.
One of the things we were thinking, and again, when, when you get down to designing that project, the practicalities come into play. But one of the things we were thinking of that experience is that it would be like, there would be no electricity, you know, you'd be eating by kerosene light maybe and you'd be cooking over fire and the composting toilet has a fan. And so, you know, it could be run with a solar panel, meet like the green agenda, but the idea of that incredible silence where you just hear the ocean and the crackling fire and like that was what we were really going for up there. So yeah, it's, it's a reason it's not there because practically I can see it'd be nice to have right there too.
Right.
Was there any further questions? I, I guess I'll, go ahead, Lauren.
Yes, what the Counselor LeBlanc was asking in the, in the description that Trevor and the, I forget the lady's name was, about that particular area, would be similar to what Stanley Lobster had on the beach and they entertained, entertained people. There's no electricity, it was just very open. Myself and my family, we enjoyed many, many summers down there while it was open and it was very enjoyable where we, you know, you could, it was just, you know, the view and just the atmosphere was just great and I could see it just being even better.
I, I guess at this time, I know we're running a little late, but that's, that's quite all right. Two of the members that are here with us, Neil McKenzie and Mike Cunningham, who sat on, on the committee. So I want to start with you, Mike. Some of your thoughts, if you don't mind, on the project and the scope.
Um, I, I really thought the process that we went through was very good. A lot of really good input and stuff. Of course, everybody knows I'm a huge Cape Forchue enthusiast and I, I really think that it, it, it takes advantage of everything Cape Forchue has to offer. And the key word for me is the uniqueness of Cape Forchue. It is a light like no other. And, and even things, you know, not just the views, not just the, the displays and stuff that could be established there, but the, the history of the cape, I mean, it's so much more detailed than any other light. It, it, it really has a lot to showcase. And then finally, I just wanted to say that, again, I really appreciate the plan as far as it's, as Trevor mentioned, its adaptability in that, you know, you can really start out and, and make some fairly significant changes right off the get-go. But on the other side of things, again, there is the concern of the residents and increased traffic and stuff and I, but I, I believe these can be managed with, without too much trouble.
Thank you, Mike. Neil, do you have any comments? Go ahead.
Yes, thank you. Thanks for inviting me to participate in the meeting today. And I want to thank the committee and all the, all the team members at Modi for all the work that was done in putting this project together. It was great to be part of it. And I, I agree with Mike that I felt that the community engagement piece and the work that was done there was, was very, very well executed and that the team did everything they could to make sure they were hearing from all sectors and all, all stakeholders. I'm, this is the second time I've seen this plan and I'm still very inspired by it. I think it's from a very high level perspective, it's, it's fantastic and something that will really make the lighthouse even more of a tourism anchor than it already is because the lighthouse is a tourism anchor. It's something we certainly leverage all the time. And as Counselor Allen said, it's, it's a place that most locals will recommend somebody do or it's a kind of a must-do experience. But this will very much, this plan and the, and the process of developing the plan will very much elevate the, the destination. It's something that ties in and aligns with very much, very much with the segments that we're marketing to, as, as was a lot of to in the presentation, you know, marketing and tourism is very competitive and in the state of COVID and post-COVID, we're, we're going to be marketing to a lot of Nova Scotians and, and regional Atlantic Canadians. And lighthouses aren't unique, so we need to make ours as unique as possible and offer those experiences that even a Nova Scotian would say, well, that's a must-do experience. I'm going to go, we're going to drive to Yarmouth and the Canadian shores because we want to see the lighthouse and experience that. But then what, what I love about it is that not only is the experience of the lighthouse going to be great and produce lots of, you know, user-generated content and, and lots of buzz online that we can build on, but as they mentioned in the, in the presentation, the, the opportunity that the lighthouse has to then push visitors to other areas within, within Yarmouth and the Canadian shores is tremendous. And it's, it's a bit understated in the, in the concept because that wasn't the purpose, was to necessarily drive visitors everywhere else. But because we would have such a fantastic tourism anchor and a tourism draw and a place for locals, it will, it will be a place where we can push people to other experiences. So push them to all the other tourism experiences you have in the area. So I see being able to utilize it much better for our cruise market, once that recovers and develops even more. I see, I do see ways we can mitigate traffic and make sure that we're being conscious of the needs of the residents at Cape Forchue. And I just think it's a really bold, fantastic plan and I hope that all partners can find a way to implement it. I wish, I wish this could happen tomorrow. So thanks again and, you know, keep, keep up, keep it up. It's, it's fantastic. I can't wait to, to work with all of you to build on it and, and move forward.
Okay, Deputy Warden Cunningham, you have it. Is there any comments that you wish to make? And Victoria?
No, Mr. Chair, it's pretty well all been covered. It's Counselor Allen said, wow, I was actually blown away by, by the presentation and I'm looking forward to, to enacting some of these recommendations as soon as possible. That's all I have to say, Chair.
Okay, thank you very much. Victoria and then Counselor Christian, go ahead.
If I could, Mr. Chair, I was just wondering if I could ask Neil a follow-up question. If Neil could maybe speak a little bit to how what's being proposed to council fits within within what the provincial and the federal tourism strategies are, and how natural partnerships might be aligning?
Sure, I can do my best. The, certainly Nova Scotia is targeting three main segments, visitor segments, we call them, authentic experiencers, cultural enthusiasts, and free spirits. And those, those visitor segments basically have values that we like to try to, try to create experiences or attractions that support those values, so that there's a, there's a real benefit and a real motivator to, for those travel segments to come. And what's been proposed with Cape for Shoe aligns to a lot of that already. So, it's, it's not as though we're trying to, we're going to create this, or you would create this amazing location, and then try to find a market to market it to. The market already exists, and the experiences that you're proposing at Cape for Shoe are ones that they're already looking for. And I also think that the local component there is huge, and that's only being kind of amplified by this current situation we're in, that we need to also ensure we have locals and Nova Scotians and those in the Atlantic provinces wanting to travel to that experience as well, because there could be disruptions in travel in the future. And I think as much as we can fortify our tourism experiences and, and infrastructure to deal with that, the better. And I think a lot of what's being proposed, even though it might not have been intended, because I believe when we started this project, COVID was not on, was not ever present, there are a lot of experiences that can happen at Cape for Shoe, even with this new proposal, that I think could be done within, you know, certain requirements of post-COVID. And federally, you know, the Land of Canada Agreement on Tourism, which is an agreement between the Maritime Provinces to market inside of the Land of Canada, to bring people into the land provinces, they've been shifting their focus, certainly as a, because of the COVID situation, to be much more of a local Nova Scotia, or sorry, Atlantic province market. And I think these types of things very much align with that. And Destination Canada would be, would be very much supportive of this. I don't know if Tourism Nova Scotia has seen this plan yet, but I would, I would expect they would be very excited to see what's happening there, because it's, it's more tourism infrastructure investment that would allow them to leverage and market to the visitor.
Okay. Counselor Cushing, you have the floor?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. We're all pretty excited about the, the development of the possibility, the development possibilities at, at the lighthouse and the Cape for Shoe area. But there's one item that Mike Cunningham brought to, brought to the forefront, and it sparked my, my memory back to it again. And that was the traffic down in that area, right along the 304, right to the, right to the lighthouse. There, the traffic is, they're not obeying the, the traffic signs, but the speed limits and whatnot. And I know I've had complaints about the speeders down there, and I've reported to our CAO, and she's contacted the RCMP and whatnot. But however, and I'm going to be very strong about this, in the future, now and in the future, we do have a tool in the possession of the municipality of Yarmouth to help get the information the RCMP need to, to correct the speeding down along the 304. And I know some of the pushback on this particular item has been it's not our responsibility to, to do certain things, no. But it's our responsibility to, we see something going on that's wrong, to report it and give the authorities the information they need in order to enforce the speed limits in that area. I think it's very vital. Mike Cunningham was dead on. People at the Cape for Shoe and through Overton are very concerned about the speed of the traffic going down through there. We can help. And I think it's up to us to help. We can enforce, but we can help.
Okay, thank you. Counselor LeBlanc, did you have your hand up?
Yes. Can you hear me this time?
Yes.
Oh, good. I had two, two, two devices going on at the same time. I could hear on one, and I could see on the other. So, anyways, but I, I've seen this presentation a couple of times, and it still blows my mind, you know. And, but, but the one thing with this COVID-19 here, we're not going to get, or it seems like the, the public in Nova Scotia don't want the Americans to come here, or the other provinces to come here. So, you know, we've got, we've got some time to surprise them next year, or two years from now, if we take this bull by the horn and do, do all, all that's, that's wanted to get this site visitor ready. And it's not that much money, you know, what, three or four million dollars?
Under five.
Huh?
Just under five.
Under five. But anyways, we've, we've, we've spent that kind of money before, and it seems like it's obvious that the counselors are, are for this. So, let's grab the bull by the horn, and let's go for it.
Okay. Was there any further discussion from counselors? I see you're all putting your thumbs up and so on. I do have some concerns and so on. I believe the project overall is a fantastic project. Some of the recommendations that you have in there, I'd have some, I have concerns in the respect of, and Mike, you should know as well as anybody, Mother Nature, hey, is, can be fine for two years, and then all of a sudden, we can have a major storm. Some of the things that you've suggested could, I could build them today, and in two years' time, they could be on the lower parking lot in pieces. So, I do have some concerns. I do have a concern of the light, the lighthouse, house itself. To me, that is what, and where, and how they had to live. And by taking out the second floor, and I'll say making it into a modern-looking style of home, I have, I won't say major issues, but I have some concerns and so on that aspect. The other thing, Counselor LeBlanc brought it up a long time ago, about a walkway along the rocks on the water side. I think that is a terrific idea, and I think that was only an eighty-five or $115,000 cost. My only concern that I have with that, and I know there's insurances and so on, can cover things, but I can see people wanting to go down on that walkway during a storm, the same as they do at Peggy's Cove, you know, and get washed. So, I, you know, I, it isn't that I'm against that. I have some concerns for safety factors built into that and so on. In the same way with Lee Ferretson Park, it's, I think it was Sue who mentioned, if there's a change, you know, because of the washing of the waves and so on, to the marsh, I agree. I, I don't know enough about Lee Ferretson Park to say that, yeah, today it's there, tomorrow it's gone. I know when they had the lighthouse scenes there, after they built one of the buildings, we had a bit of a storm, and they found it in pieces. Now, I know it was only built as a temporary little building, but that's how Mother Nature is. So, in, in the architectural design, anything that you do, I guess you got to build it for a double earthquake kind of thing. So, when the, the figures came across to your counselors, and I was looking at them, okay, $115,000, that's 200 to me. I'm going to, not lie to you, because you got to have to build into my thing. But personally, I think it's great. It should have been done years ago, being able to stop the light, being able to go into the fog building, and up on the roof of the fog building, the telescopes or binoculars, great idea. But I think, in all honesty, the municipality should look at really first, building the parking lot up there and building the restaurant, because food, and good food, will attract people. And I think the, those are just some of my comments at this time. So, unless there's further comment from any of the counselors, I think I'd take this opportunity. Thank you very much for the presentation. It was a fantastic presentation. Yeah.
I've seen, I've seen Mike have his hand up, Counsel. Mike?
Okay, go ahead then, Mike, I'm sorry.
If, if you don't mind, but you're absolutely right, Leland. I mean, you know, you could, you could do a lot of work down there, and then have one of those one-in-20-year storms that comes through. And there's, there's been storms like that in the past. But I, I think, and you said it, I think if you take a look at it from an engineering perspective, and think, okay, you know, what can we do here, acknowledging the fact that there may be times when work has to be done and repairs have to be done, I, I think you could come up with a reasonable plan. As far as the kids going down on those rocks and stuff like that, again, that's something that has to be dealt with. But if they're down there trespassing, you know, that's, that's another thing.
Yes. Okay, yeah, no, a good point. Go ahead, Victoria, and then we're going to wrap it up.
So, thank you, Mr. Chair. I sensed that things were wrapping up. And so, before they wrap up, I'd like to thank our consulting team and our steering committee team for their work. And also on the call today, hiding a little bit, is Mark Blin, our Economic Development Officer. And so, I want to thank everybody on the team for their active participation and how engaged they were in the project. It's super to see the excitement level with everybody involved. And I'm very pleased that, you know, what's delivered to you is a big dream and a big vision, which we need to do, but it's practical, and it's realizable over time. So, I just want to thank everybody who rolled up their sleeves and contributed, elbow-greased to this project. It was a pleasure to work with each one of you.
Thanks, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so I guess, Victoria, from me, representing council, where do we take, or would want to take this, I'll call it the master draft plan at this time?
So, Mr. Chairman, if there are no major concerns, then what the team at EDM will do is they will deliver to us the final version of the plan, because it is still marked draft. And then council will take it from there and have a conversation about adoption, you know, all wholesale, bits and pieces, that sort of thing. And the deputy warden had asked about next steps. And so, you know, once council has the final plan, they'll make decisions, and then we'll start to plug things into the capital investment plan.
Yes, and my, my one comment to that would be, let's not wait and drag this until October or November. Like, I know there's issues, COVID and so on, but I think this is the opportunity, because I think both provincial and federal governments are probably biting at the, at the teeth, wanting some good projects to assist with and so on.
So, if it's the wishes of council, Mr. Chair, EDM can have the final document available for council at the end of this month, and council can exercise their wishes at that meeting.
Okay, good, good. Appreciate that. That's what we'll be looking forward to then. Okay, thank you very much. And have a, a rest of the day is a good day. It's a little cloudy out now, but here in Yarmouth, but enjoy the rest of your day. Thank you, Trevor. Thank you, Sue.
Thank you.
Yeah.
It's a real pleasure.
Thank you.
Bye.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. The next item on the agenda, counselors, was for recess for like 10 minutes. Is that what you want to do? Or do you want to go on to the next item and then take a recess? What's your wishes? You want a recess?
Let's do a recess.
Okay, recess, 10 minutes. What time do I have now? I have 10 past 12, so you're looking at, at 20 past 12? 20 past 12, be back on the, okay?
Liz, do we, do we have, do we have a lunch delivery?
And Liz, my glasses, my glasses got fogged up there while I was eating that lobster sandwich, so. That I had delivered, that I had delivered. Well, I hear some of the food banks in, is it New Brunswick and so on, are giving away lobsters because they can't sell them. They're cooked lobsters, that the price is so low that the fishermen are, and they can't sell them, so they're giving them to the food banks. So, we were lucky here, guys. Okay, item number, we're ready? Item number seven, business arising from the minutes. The standing item update on what's happening there, or?
There's, there's no update. There's been no change in the, in the project since I last reported to council.
Okay.
Mr. Warden, the deputy warden has his hand up.
Oh, okay, there I see. Go ahead, John. Go ahead, you're on.
Yeah, in regards to that, I heard on the radio that the municipal Argyle made a press release that they are going to be partnering, partnering in funding with Bell Canada on the application. And someone talked to me, says, well, why ain't you guys doing that? And I kind of think that a press release stating pretty well the same thing would be in order. Because we did.
Yeah, we're working with them. There can't be, there's, the, the tenders or whatever haven't been awarded and so on. But, go ahead, Daniel.
And also, I'm still waiting for any indication that this, that phase one is coming. Like, we, we're not seeing, we're not seeing anything down our way as far as Bell, yet. So, an update on, on, I mean, they're, they're starting to hand up, they're starting to look at phase two. Would be nice if phase one was at least in operation.
Yeah. Okay. So, that's all the information on that. So, item number eight is correspondence. 8.1, letter from the Cardiac Cycling Society of Nova Scotia, challenge to Nova Scotians as well as to municipal leaders. That used to be the Heartland Tour. It still is, I guess, the Heartland Tour. And I don't have the information in front of me, but they were given a $1,500, what it, prize for the community that has the most, I'm going to say hours or minutes in. They want to, Victoria, you got to help me on here. Was it 150 minutes a week?
Yep.
150 minutes a week. And you could log, you have to log in, and you have a logbook and so on. And it, it didn't matter. You could be walking, sweeping the floor, as long as you done 150 minutes, and you logged it in, and you'd be under a community umbrella, I guess. And whatever community has the most, it's a $1,500 award. So, I didn't know if this was something they, Victoria, that they wanted us to put out on our website and so on, for people to take up the challenge. But I asked to have it put on if counselors wished, and we could have staff do some checking for us. I know, Trevor, you, you've got 150, and I was wondering if I could buy some of your time?
I'm willing to just pay. Yeah, I've got, I do more than 150 every week, for sure.
Yeah, well, I thought maybe you could sell it off to us, eh, for a dollar a minute or something. I don't know.
I'll, 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 I'll definitely look, I'll definitely consider that.
So, is that something you'd be interested in looking into? I think, when does it start? Go ahead, Victoria.
There's, there's really nothing to look into. All the information is in the, in the information that we shared with you. Individuals who want to accept the challenge will just register, and you'll attach yourself to the District of Yarmouth. Liz and I have already registered, and we can share this on the municipal website as well.
Okay, okay. So, Lisa will, will do with that. The Heartland Tour always went down to the Cape for Shoe light station. They used to go through Patty, through your area, up through Port Maitland, and out through here, through the Chabogue, on the Chabogue Road. They done, used to go down through Argyle, I believe, some part of Argyle, and so on. And they, they always enjoyed it here in Yarmouth. So, I just thought, if they're willing to do this, we should try and participate. Okay, that's where that one is. 8.1.2, letter from Hockey Nova Scotia, statement on return to hockey. Go ahead.
So, Mr. Chairman, this came into the office through the relationship that Modi has with the Association of Municipal Administrators and NSFM. In the work that the warden and Counselor Durkey have been doing through the NSFM and the AMA, in terms of engaging at the provincial level around issues to do with COVID and the impact on municipal operations, this letter came to us. And it basically outlines the plan that Hockey Nova Scotia has, under the umbrella of Hockey Canada, for delivering hockey under the umbrella of Hockey Canada for delivering hockey to communities again this winter. And so I think the action for this council is to reach out to the Mariner Centre Management Board and ensure that they're aware of this and ensure that they're at the table so that the costs associated with their plan at the Mariner Centre can be included and we can understand what it means locally. We have several hockey programs locally. We have obviously the Maritime Hockey League. We have minor hockey, we have high school hockey, and we have recreational hockey. In addition to skating, which we haven't heard anything about figure skating yet. So it's my recommendation that council do engage the Mariner Centre Management Board Authority to make sure the issues related to our facility are heard at this particular table.
Okay, in stating that, it's a good point. Has the Mariner Centre Board been meeting by Zoom or anything? Have they got any meeting scheduled? And who's the chair? Mike Randall is still chair. Should we send off this and ask them that maybe they should set up a meeting so they can start and work on a plan or is that something we should do?
Well, I think the big thing is to make sure that the voice of the Mariner Centre is heard when Hockey Nova Scotia starts talking about delivering hockey through our local associations. So, you know, I think that's the action for this council. You have a separate legal entity that looks after that facility for you. And so, you know, as long as you're indicating to them that they need to be at the table, you know, there will likely be less skaters on the ice and there could be pressure, you know, to adjust fees. There has to be a conversation in terms of, you know, operational dynamics and of course, the business model.
Okay. So just direction, Victoria, on this? 8.1.3, Destination Canada, the COVID-19, the resident survey that I think you've seen in your, in your package and so on. Quite interesting. Go ahead, Victoria.
Right, so thank you, Mr. Chair. So I added that to your package because again, it relates to the work that councillor Jerky and the warden are doing on our behalf at the NSFM table. And we received a presentation from the Tourism Industry of Nova Scotia, Tourism Industry Association of Nova Scotia last week. And their lead individual, Sarah, and I forget her first name, Michelle Sarin, indicated to us at that table that the most important thing that we need from a tourism perspective at this point is for Premier McNeil and Dr. Robert Strang to state clearly and simply that it is safe to travel in Nova Scotia. And the results of this survey do indicate how important that statement is. So it's my recommendation that this council write to Dr. Strang and the premier, carbon copy NSFM and tie-ins and YASTA and make the request that the statement be made and it be made clearly.
Yes. Can that be direction only or should we have a motion on that? Just direction?
Yeah, I think direction is okay.
Okay. And is that the wishes of council, I take it?
Yes.
I'm going to make a comment here. I talked third party with a professional yesterday. And I mentioned that there was some Americans here in my residency, just up the road. And they looked at me, said, what do you mean? I said, well, they've been here. And I said, they've had other people from the States here. No. They've only been there. Well, what did you do about it? I said, well, the only thing when I found out, I called my CAO and asked if the borders were open. And she, Victoria, got in touch with the RCMP. They were made aware that these Americans were here. And they had to do follow-ups. And they didn't say they were going to check with them every day, that they were doing the 14 days or whatever. But they were to do follow-up on these residents now. They have a summer home here. And I drive by the place, you know, every other day or every third day. Their car is in the yard and the other day or last week, there was a second car in their yard from the States. And yesterday I noticed it was gone. This professional was very upset that there was American citizens back. He wanted to know how they got here. I said, I haven't spoken with them. I said, I would imagine they came through New Brunswick, got on the ferry in St. John, came across Digby and Digby Down. That would have been my assumption, that they're here. Go ahead, councillor Jerky.
Is there a chance that these folk may have dual citizenships? Because if they do, then Canadians are allowed to be, to come back home.
Whether they have dual citizenship, that I couldn't tell you, but they still have to quarantine. And then to see the other vehicle last week. And I've gone by, like I said, yesterday, it wasn't there. And I'm just wondering if they've gone left or whatever and so on. You know, go ahead again, councillor.
Thank you. I think the concerns with the destination survey are valid. However, I mean, I think people are really nervous about having people even moving around and down at this end of the province. I know within Nova Scotia, that's going to be the prime. They'll be pushing for that, but quite frankly, I think we are afraid of other people coming here because we don't want to get an outbreak of COVID, particularly since we didn't have it. I know there is a concern about the ferry starting, but that can't happen anyway until the borders are open and as of, I heard yesterday that they're going to be extending the the shutdown of the border until the end of July, so. But, you know, we know that there's a high risk. I mean, in Campbellton, that the one person has infected a whole bunch of people and so that's the scare. So, I mean, I know we want people to start coming for business purposes, but for health and safety purposes, I don't think anybody's in a huge rush to have a lot of people here.
So was there any other comments on the survey? You read it down the... 8.2 said for information. Was there anything for information? I don't think so. I didn't think so. Under item number nine, new business. 9.1, Mariner Centre Expansion. Councillor Allen, you have the floor.
Yes, I asked for this to be on the agenda and I'm glad it is. I'm just, in light of what's been taking place at the YMCA and comments issued by Minister of Communities, Culture and Heritage, Leo Glevin in the CBC News, I'm just wondering if you, Mr. Chair, I believe you're the chair of the
Yes.
Committee of Nine, I'm not sure what our name is. I'm just wondering if there's been any discussions around that. I mean, I see his comments are like, they're certainly willing to look at what is possible. You know. I'm not trying to slight the YMCA. We know there was troubles. We're trying to move forward. We're willing to work at solutions to move forward, but I'm just interested if we're going to be sitting down with Mr. Glevin, if there's a chance that maybe our expansion could be moved to the forefront somehow. I'm hearing numbers put out there. I'm not sure where they come from of how our expansion is 10 years away. I'm not sure if we've put that out or where it's came from, but I'm just... I'd like to see things start moving one way or the other. We've got to work with our partners and see what we can, we can come up with for a solution, but if a new aquatic centre scaled back a little bit from what we originally proposed could come within the funding arrangements that we were looking at, instead of putting it into the old building, putting it into a new one and maybe having our federal and provincial partners take place in it, I think it's a conversation that we should be having now. There's a push-on for... I'm not exactly sure. I don't know how to put this, but there's a push-on to save the Y, but I don't know whether it's the facility or the YMCA. So I think there's some major confusion in our community as to what that is. But I am in belief that the money that was asked, if we're going to put it out, I personally, on my opinion, I would like to be seeing us combined with with other levels of government and our two partners and moving on an aquatic centre sooner, way sooner rather than later.
I'll agree with you on that. I've only spoken with Victoria very little in the last little while. I'd like to, yeah, I'd like to set up a meeting of the Expansion Committee and for us to make the decision that we drop the field house that we look at and possibly ask EXP if what they could do and what the cost would be to do a quick downsizing or downscaling of the aquatic part of the building. No atrium, you know, take away some of the fancyisms that we asked and to kind of possibly give us, because they don't do anything unless they're paid to, you know, give us a cost because, Victoria, we used to 75, did we not?
Yeah, oh yeah, that budget spent.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So if they could give us something on that so that we could go out real quick and find out, you know, here's a new concept of the aquatic centre. It's going to cost us $15,000 to re-steal it. Here it is, and it's going to cost 18 mil. That we have that in our hands to present to both the federal and provincial government and to our municipal governments. And I think we could start and work on something of that nature. Daniel, then Trevor.
As much as I appreciate that, Leland, I guess my first thing would be to see the Committee of Nine sit down with Mr. Glevin and before we go anywhere with spending money on more architecture and things like that, to know for sure 100% that there's an appetite by our provincial government to help us. We already went through a whole lot of spending money on what we thought was our provincial government and our federal partners interested just to find out that unfortunately, it seems to have died on someone's desk. But times are different now. Our town is now in more of a desperate need. And I'm just, I would like, definitely like to see us sit down with Mr. Glevin as soon as possible and see what their appetites are and see where their mindset is as to what kind of money we can get. And then we can go to whoever our architect is or whatever with a budget and say, we need this budget to work. That would be my, my thoughts on how I would like to see it progress. He's mentioned that he's willing to talk with the three municipal partners. I don't know if he's reached out to us yet. He did state that he did reach out to the town of Yarmouth, but I don't believe and ma'am, the CAO could tell us, but I don't believe he's actually reached out to to us and everybody is definitely knows that we are a major stakeholder in whatever's going to take place, I would think. So it would be nice to hear from.
I think I can answer a lot of questions, Mr. Chairman, if I could just jump in there with your permission, councillor Cunningham. So I had a conversation with the deputy minister, Mr. Houston, who was making inquiries about the proposal that had been put forward to government. So I guess as the CAO to the chairperson of the steering committee, that's kind of how that conversation happened. And so I shared a little bit with Mr. Houston, a little bit of the background about how that proposal got developed and what the timeline had looked like in 2019 and into the winter of 2020. And so I had asked him for clarification on the minister's comments, you know, what did he mean by that? And so where we left our conversation was that it seemed appropriate that the minister would engage with the Mariner Centre Expansion Steering Committee, which would be the mayor and the two wardens and their deputies and the CAOs and try to figure out kind of where we're at on all of that. And so we did receive an email yesterday from Mr. Houston indicating that he's spoken to the minister and they are working now to get a meeting on the calendar.
So your thoughts and Daniel is to meet with just the Mariner Centre. I thought, Victoria, their first question was to meet with the three councils and to work towards doing something for the YMCA.
I didn't read that email that way.
Okay, that's fine. Okay, then Trevor, then Lauren, then John.
Right, I'll agree with much of what councillor Allen said. We went through a lengthy public consultation process and had a report commission as to what the upgrades should look like at the Mariner Centre. And given that, I think we'd be very, should be very, very careful about moving forward with any kind of project until we consult with the public at the Mariner Centre, if it were going to be scaled back that much. And again, I think we need to know what's going to happen in terms of a transition plan from the current Y. I agree with councillor Allen, there's a lot of confusion out there as to whether it's the Centennial Pool Building slash Y, whether it's the Y in terms of all the services it operates and management and all those types of things. So those are all issues that we really need to know about. And these ensuing meetings will hopefully bring some clarity before we can talk about making any any decision at all. So I would agree with councillor Allen on that account. So a bit premature about talking about getting engineering, in my view, additional engineering like that done. So those are my comments. Thanks so much.
Councillor Christian, you have the floor?
Yes, thank you, Ms. Chair. Again, I agree with what councillor Allen was speaking to and what councillor Penny and Trevor was talking about. And, you know, if we really focus on what we need, and definitely we got to go to the public on this one probably, we need a pool. We need a pool. There's been years and years and years that the President's Centennial Pool built in 1967 hasn't been adequate, served a basic service to the public. And you've got to give high praises to Jenny Smith by developing the Y cap swim team. She done an excellent job working with competitive swimmers in a pool that wasn't large enough for actual training. So, you know, I'm in support of making sure we, if the feedback is correct, that we do need a pool, we do need a six lane, we do need a place where they can do competitive intermarial competition. Because we know the people of Yarmouth can host good tournaments. We know that. We're good at it. And this would just be another feather in our hat to increase increase the tourism and the sporting activity in the Yarmouth area. But as Daniel said and Trevor did, we must meet with those, with Leo Glevin first. That's my opinion. I think we've got a big challenge to make it happen.
Deputy Warden, you have the floor?
No, I absolutely agree with councillor Allen, but it all boils down to, we're we're seeing these news reports and one of the questions that I keep hearing about, and I still have questions to, is is how have these been proposals been put together and who's been part of it? I certainly haven't been part of it. I don't even know what we're talking about expanding, whether we're, and I don't want to labor the Y or not bring them into the conversation, but that's been the conversation too. What are we actually pulling for? What direction are we going in? We keep hearing about press releases about trust funds. Well, we haven't been part of that conversation either. I want to be part of the solution and right now people appear to think that I'm part of the problem. And that's certainly not true. If I'm not part of any conversation anywhere, I don't know which way to go with this. I really don't. And I really do believe that whether it's a meeting with the Mariner Centre Expansion Committee, yeah, I do believe we should be getting there. We put forward a proposal. We were basically told it was too much money, but that's where it stopped. Now, unfortunately, this situation with the Y coming, which we knew was coming, let's face it, I knew it was coming. There was, there was issues for years and years and years back on my first term at council. I don't want to muddy the two things together, the Y and the Mariner Centre expansion, but... Mariner Center expansion, but unfortunately, it's really muddy right now. As a matter of fact, I reached out to an MLA, and they don't even have answers of what we're talking about yet. So, come on. I'm willing to be part of the solution, but right now, people seem to think that I'm part of the problem, and I'm really not. If someone can make clear to me what exactly we're trying to do, well, then let's forge a plan and move forward. It might not be agreeable, but at least I want to try to be part of a solution of some sort.
Okay. Counselor LeBlanc, then Counselor Durkey. Go ahead, Greg.
Yeah. As you all seen, I had one letter. That's the only letter that I got, and it was from Warner Camo. Then I called him, and I had a great, great conversation with him. And he said, let's forget the past. I don't want to hear about the past. He said, let's go forward. And the one thing he said, he said he went swimming in January. He was still swimming in January at the pool there. He said, the solution that we need is right away to get the pool, get the kids back in the pool. And he said, we can do that. It's working. I was of the understanding that that place was closed because of financial problems, but also with the infrastructure was collapsing. Apparently, according to Warner, the building can still be used. This is what I understand. Now, I agree with Daniel. We should go for the Mariner Center expansion or the pool. But in the meantime, how long is it going to take to build that at the Mariner Center? A year and a half, two years? Support the Y. Keep it going until we have the pool.
Counselor Durkey, then Victoria.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thanks to all the comments. I think everybody's on the right track. However, there's a few concerns that I have. I think we have two issues here. One is that we need a new building. There's no question about that. And it's something that a lot of time and effort has been put into a proposal that was created, that we don't really know, you know, what direction, as Daniel said, what direction are we going in with the Mariners expansion? All I know is there was comments made about us having to do some fundraising, and I don't know anything other than that. So, you know, I think both levels of government need to come back to us and sit down with us and say, okay, you know, what can we do here? How much money are you willing to give us? When will that be? I think we need to think of a timeline, look at a timeline and see, maybe there's no money for it. We don't know. The other issue, so there's two. The other issue is that we have people who need pool access. And if, my perspective on this is that the minister wants to talk about keeping the facility open for now, at least, until we can get something new in the works. Because we do have a lot of people who are involved in swimming at the Y. We have a lot of seniors that use it. We have youth that use it. We have families that come and need a place to go. And it's not just the swimming. And I've received a number of phone calls and emails about seniors program. It was mentioned this morning about Y Reach. And some of these programs probably can be done at another facility if necessary. However, there's a major concern that some of these programs won't continue. So, you know, it's a twofold part about the facility itself. It's the pool is one part, and then the youth programs and things are the other side of it. But in the meantime, we don't know how long this is going to take. So what's the solution, as John says, in the meantime? Because we don't want our schools, our kids in schools, to go without swimming lessons. I think because, you know, we're a community, we have a lot of lakes, we have the ocean, that kids must have training in swimming and life-saving for some to be able to continue. So I think what I'd like to hear is, when the minister comes down, what are his thoughts in terms of assisting with obtaining the facility that still exists until such time as we can get shovel in the ground? So it's like, okay, are you willing to give us, you know, money for the Mariner Center? And maybe we can support continuing with some of the operating expenses? Are they willing to give the few million dollars for capital for the existing building? We need to sit down at a table or a group of us and hear, you know, what direction that the province is thinking of at this time.
Victoria and then Daniel.
You know, I would echo what Counselor Durkey said. You know, the minister has reached out and has indicated a willingness to have a conversation. And, you know, to be clear, you know, the municipality declining an offer to enter into ownership and operation responsibilities of a facility is very different than being part of a dialogue to develop a short-term plan, a bridge plan. So having the province come to the table and have a very real conversation is critical. And to Counselor Durkey's point, be part of a short-term plan based on a commitment for a long-term provision. And I did just want to clarify something that Counselor LeBlanc referenced in his conversation with Mr. Camo. We know, Counselor LeBlanc, that from the Y leadership, that there are investments required in order to legally open that pool. So while an individual may think that there's no reason the pool can open, we have documentation that indicates certain investments must be made in order to open the doors.
Yeah. Counselor Allen, you have the floor.
Well, I was going to echo some of the sentiment that this Victoria said. I just, when we're at the table, I guess my concern is I want to know, are we opening the pool? Are we bringing the YMCA back? Because they're two separate entities. So, and I definitely would, I would definitely want to have some type of commitment to the future. I don't want, if the future is up in the air, it's, we need, there's too much money to be put out in the long term in a 162-year-old building that could be reinvested into a new building. And I'm not against bridging the gap as long as there's, as long as there's something at the end of the gap, I guess, is exactly similar to what Patty is trying to say, Counselor Durkey is. There should be something at the end of the gap, like, you know, it can't be a complete hole. There's got to be, there's got to be an end, there's got to be an end game. So, anyway, thank you.
Counselor Durkey, go ahead.
I do want to comment that if you read the feasibility, or not the feasibility, the asset study, the building is good for another 10 years with, you know, at least $5 million put into it. So, but again, I agree with Daniel that, you know, there has to be a light at the end of the tunnel, a plan for moving forward. We can't just bridge the gap without seeing something in the works for the future.
I'm going to, is there anybody else? I am going to give you my comments, what I kind of take from it. When the Y said they weren't going to reopen their doors, not because of COVID, but because of financial situations and so on, that the municipal units hadn't ponied up. They didn't say that, but that was some part of the reasoning. Somehow, my assumption would be Mayor Mood or somebody got in touch with Heritage and Culture, Culture and Heritage, the minister, and told him about the Y. The YMCA, as it stands, is an important part of a community. It plays an important part. And I believe his intention was originally to come down to talk to the three municipal units on what they could give and what the three municipal units could do in the short term to open the Y again. And I'm going to be on the 1.5 to reopen the doors. I don't think there was going to be a long term on the $5 to $6 million to upgrade it. There was also the request in there from the YMCA of $200,000 a year from the three municipal units for operational. And I'm thinking, well, so over a 10-year period, $200,000, there's another million. So we're talking almost in a 10-year period, what we would pay to keep the Y going for those 10 years is what the three municipal units would put into the Mariner Center over a 10-year period. And I'm trying to think. Now, so now it has been shifted that he wants to meet or is going to meet with the Mariner Center expansion, which is he going to be saying, well, our unit's going to be willing to open the Y, 1.5 million, and carry on with your expansion? And I'm not, can I trust him? And Daniel states, are you going to be committed to the expansion? We were told that when we spent the $75,000, there was going to be money, and there wasn't any. So I'm kind of, I'm kind of here. I don't have no issues meeting. I really don't. And sit down, but I'm going to go to listen. I want to listen to what the other two units are saying, and I want to listen to what the provincial government is going to say. I'm not saying anything from my council that we're committed to this at the Y or we're committed to this at the Mariner Center at this time. Victoria and then Gerard. Oh, you didn't have anything? Okay, Counselor LeBlanc, go ahead.
Do we hear, do we hear anything from Zach?
No, I haven't. I haven't heard anything from him. I know I got enough emails from residents and people, and the majority of the people that emailed me, and I sent them all off to you folks too, for people that had worked at the YMCA as, you know, staff people and so on. I have not had any residents come to me and say, you know, my kids, I participate there. I haven't had any residents do that.
Can, can, can...
Let's see here, John.
Chris Dartmouth, the federal? Have we approached him?
Not at this time. Not at this time, Gerard. Not at this time. Deputy Warden, go ahead.
Yes, Mr. Chair, thank you. I want to make it very clear. We were told back in February that there was money coming or available through Community, Culture and Heritage way back over a year ago. My question is, is where was that money? Because we come up with a plan. The plan obviously was too rich, but there was no, no one really coming back and saying that that money was, or there was only X amount of dollars. It just stopped. So I'm under the understanding the money through Community, Culture and Heritage, through the federal, through the federal government is still there. But man, it's not from a lack of trying. Like, we've lost a year. I don't know if I'm part of that problem, but we lost a whole year. We could have been well into the design phase of an expansion or the building of a pool at the Mariner Center. And I don't want to muddy the two things, but we were told the money was there. There's news reports in the media, CBC, CGLS. The money apparently was there. Well, where is it? Well, I'm hoping that the minister can get down here as soon as possible, so we can get this problem fixed, because it is a problem.
Okay, so I mean, I guess that's where we stand. We're waiting on the minister to set up a Zoom meeting, and we'll have that discussion. And that's between the three CAOs, the three mayors and wardens, the three deputy mayors and wardens. And Victoria can ask the question at those Mariners Expansion Committee, oh, Mike from the town, their communication person.
Mike Carter.
Yeah, would he be at this meeting? He should be, or should he?
Jeff frequently brings him along, and of course, I would bring a support person with me.
Yeah, oh yes, yeah. Yeah, no, no, I, yeah, okay. Okay. So as soon as they set that up, we'll have that meeting and go forward from there. And I assume that'll probably, hopefully, be before our council meeting, Victoria, don't you think?
I wouldn't, I wouldn't make an assumption. I really get the sense that the Deputy Minister and his team were not very well-versed in the issues in our community. And I know that this week they're taking some time to do their research and to become well-informed. So I wouldn't assume that, you know, in 14 days, we will have had that meeting. But hopefully, we'll be able to report back at council about the date for this Zoom meeting.
Yeah. And was it, no, the memory's good, but it's also short. Did in Houston's email state that MLA's Zach Churchill would be there?
Correct.
Or would be, correct. Yeah, okay. So was there any further questions, Daniel, you have on the expansion at this time? Your fun, okay. Moving on then. 9.2, glass serving booths for Cape Frishu, Counselor T Cunningham. Trevor, you have the floor.
Yes, thank you. I recently viewed a YouTube video, and it's going to be connected to our minutes for people to view. But essentially, in Europe, they're just small glass serving booths, and they're outside. It's almost sort of like a fancy, almost like small greenhouse-type thing where servers can actually come in, and they've got an elongated board, and they can actually serve diners. Can happen at the Cape potentially, is we could have a few of those installed, and it would be lovely for people to, there it is on the screen. So in any event, we could have a couple of those installed, short-term, and that could be an additional thing that people could come to the Cape to do. And again, it's windy often there, so this would be a good thing, and people would be able to socially distance. And we could probably reuse and integrate this. We've all seen the, we've all seen the wonderful presentation about the upgrades, potential upgrades to Forshu property in terms of the master plan. So, you know, these may be able to be reused, you know, at that time when we're doing those upgrades. I'm not certain. But in any event, some food for thought, and perhaps staff could look into this.
Cough.
Victoria, do you want to play that deal for everybody? Maybe we'll do that then. Okay, thank you.
Quite the idea.
Great, thank you. I guess the one drawback, being too hot, wouldn't be an issue if we were to do something like that at the Cape Forshu. So in any event, maybe that's something we could consider, short-term. It's not a big cost. Or, and again, I don't know how, maybe we Or, and again, I don't know how, maybe we'd have staff think about that a little bit, and how we could integrate that into, or if we even wanted to do something like that. But it's just an idea I thought I'd bring to the council table, food for thought. And again, there are, some of those themes were sort of in my mind present with what some of the presentation in kind, this is a much smaller thing. The presentation earlier on, earlier on this morning. So in any event, I'll, I'll leave that for people to ponder, and perhaps we could do something like that if, if it's, if it's felt that that would be worth, worthwhile. But again, just bringing it for conversation's sake. Thank you.
Was there any questions or concerns at this time? Go ahead, Lauren.
Yes, Trevor brought that to my attention too. The ones I've seen were kind of like a bubble, sort of, right? So I, you know, which would be something similar again, right? But the thing of it is, sometimes, I think now we have to think outside the box. We have to figure out how we're going to move forward in case we run into some type of problem in the fall or down the road, right? Like, I think we're okay, but, you know, but this type of thinking and this type of suggestions like Trevor brought forward, and like many of us have talked about at the Cape for Shoe master plan, I think we have to, you know, in order to get some of these things down, we've got to think outside the box and just make it happen. You know, we can go down the consultant road many times for many things, and they're all going to come up with the same thing, the most expensive project possible, you seen that at the Mariner Center. So, yeah, I think it's time for us to think outside the box and how we can help ourselves.
So it's direction to the CAO. Is this something that one of the staff could look into? Cost, length, width, and height? Because I don't think you have the height, the length, or the width to do this over at Cape for Shoe out on the patio or anywhere over there.
Yeah, well, I think what I'll start with is, is some off-the-shelf products. There's all kinds of variations of greenhouse products in the marketplace, and, you know, that I'm a firm believer when you can to employ the KISS philosophy, keep it simple. And so, you know, if there's an off-the-shelf product that would accommodate that, that idea, that philosophy, then we'll definitely look for something and bring it back to council for pricing for sure.
Well, I, I can, I can make a quick, Patty, just for a second, make a quick suggestion. I believe, you know, on one of the props in Hollywood, it was on the Get Smart Show, it's the cone of silence, they probably have a bunch of those. Counselor Durkey, go ahead.
I just want to comment that I think those are awesome. And I think, yeah, that even if we had COVID or not, COVID, it, it would be a really neat private way to sit outside. We know, as long as they can be stable, and we don't have to worry about, you know, them falling over or whatever, but to, to have a, you know, a nice little family gathering or a couple gathering in something like that where it's, you know, it's private, you avoid the wind out there, that would stop that, even if in the rain, it would be a really neat experience, would add to the experiences out there.
Okay. So any further discussion on that? Hearing none, we'll move on to 9.3, the community wells. And I believe that's Counselor Durkey, go ahead.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, we have no idea what's in our future in terms of health and safety with COVID, with, with the drought. Again, we've experienced that a few times, that maybe it's time that we consider drilling our own well so that our residents can have access to water. You know, the, the town owns the, the Breton, South Ohio location. They also probably have to consider and think about the, the situation in terms of water levels going down, and maybe that we need to be independent. So, so I think that's something that we should consider, and maybe we can direct staff to look into the cost of drilling our own well somewhere central in the municipality so that our residents have access to, to water on a regular basis when it's needed.
If you, Counselor Cushing, you had your hand up?
Yes, I did, thank you, Ms. Warden. Patty's suggestion about a community well is, is, is not a bad idea. But you know, Lake George has lots of water, and I don't see why we can't work with the town in a cooperation effort to make sure the citizens in, in the municipality of Yarmouth are able to get water from these, from these towers. You know, some of the things I've, I've seen that kind of boggles my mind about restrictions and, you know, it just, you know, there's too many barriers being put up for a simple solution.
Guess Patty, then Gerard.
Thank you, I believe Gerard was first.
Okay, go ahead, Gerard, I'm sorry.
I agree with Patty. I think that that would be a great idea to, to have a dug well somewhere as, you know, central, because I'm, I'm, I'm already having calls, and I was having calls last year and two years ago, you know? It's, it's an ongoing thing, and we said we, it seems the town just want, you know, wants to regulate their own water.
Okay, Patty, go ahead.
Yes, thank you. A couple of things. One is that the town water supply is regulated by the UARB. So whatever, somebody has to pay for it. The town residents have to pay for their water, so when someone uses town water, it has to be paid for, right? No matter what. So who sets the regulations or the costs? I mean, it could be the UARB. We could avoid any of that problem if we had our, our own well. Whether or not we'd have to charge residents for the water is another thing. I mean, if it was a steady supply of water, then, then, then we don't have to worry about anybody else. We'd have our own source for our residents. And I, I still think it, it's something that we should consider looking into the cost of doing. I want to add to that, if I can remember what I was about to say. Oh, that, just to reiterate, that we do have our well drilling program, and if people are having issues and they feel that this is a long-term problem, then, then, then they have to consider, you know, putting in a new well, and we have a program to help, to help with that.
Daniel, then Victoria.
Yes, I'm in 100%, 100% agreement with Counselor Durkey. I, I think the municipality having their own supply is a great idea, whether it be a drilled well, whether we have access to town water on one of our own properties, that if we had to foot the bill ourselves as opposed to like the Mariner Center where it's split a few ways, just something, any, anything at all that we can start providing water to our, to our residents. And yes, I, I, I'd also agree with Counselor Durkey that if people are starting to see that this is becoming a problem year after year, I'm, I'm hoping that they would start taking advantage of some of these programs that we have to, to help find a solution for each individual. But until that time, we're going to have people, I believe this summer, that are going to be needing water. As Counselor LeBlanc said, he's already got people looking, and it's early. So it's something we should definitely be on top of. Thanks.
Victoria, is there a comment?
So at the staffing level, I've already been working with the team at Remo, and we have a meeting set to meet with a hydrologist who provides services to the Nova Scotia government. What we're facing now is issues with the water table, right? So there are individuals who have spent significant amounts of money to create new, new wells on their property, and they haven't even accessed water. So I think, you know, from a planning perspective, if we can understand where we're at with our water table, it will help inform decisions going along. A staff report that outlines, you know, what the probable investment is, what the required operating parameters will be, what the liability issues will be, I, I think is, is appropriate at this point. And so I'm, I'm happy to accept direction to, to get to work on that for sure. And the other piece is, the other piece is educational, you know? So if this is a new normal for us, dry summers, if this is a new normal for us, dry summers, then we have to adjust our set slightly with respect to the expectations of residents, and we have to start teaching better water conservation habits. We're not used to that around here. We're not used to living like they have to live in California and in some other jurisdictions where water gets scarce on a regular basis. And so it's two things. It's, it's providing some access, but it's also reeducating people to help, help themselves as much as possible as well.
Deputy Warden, you have the floor. John?
Yeah. As Counselor Gerard LeBlanc had mentioned, I'm getting several calls about access to, to water in the community well project that Counselor Durkey had put forward is certainly an intriguing adventure and something that I, I think is needed. But also the acronym KISS comes to mind. I don't, can't remember what Counselor mentioned it, but maybe since that the town does already have the infrastructure in place, I, I'm wondering about the cost of, of setting up our own, yeah, it was Counselor Allen, setting up our own dispensary system. Because when you're talking about drilling wells, there, there's the, the volume, the volume that we may not or may have a problem with. There's the Department of Health, it has to be tested, whereas the public water supply, our fire department and, and our own business has to, almost on a, I think it's a, every three-month basis, we have to have that water tested. So there's, there's that aspect of it, there's the liability aspect. But the KISS, the KISS thing, keep it simple. There's also some access that I know people are using, and they're not tested by the Department of Health, of natural springs around the area. There's one on the Holly Road I know of. We also know on the road that I live on, the Hamilton Road, there was a water plant there at one time. It's now being repurposed, but there, there certainly is access to, to a, a great supply of water there, because as we all remember, there used to be a water, a water plant that, I can't remember the name of the company that did, doing the business. It was owned by Giordani, that they used that area. So there's lots of solutions out there. But I, I think that's something that we should have staff look into, because unfortunately, as, as the weather seems to be changing around here, we're not getting as much water, and this seems to be a bigger concern over, over the past few years. And, and the CAO is certainly right that we, we have to start speaking about conservation. And one simple part of conservation is low-flow toilet. Over the past few years, I've changed my toilets from something that uses over 20 liters to something that uses six every time it flushes. So that's certainly an important piece of it. But, but I'm in full agreement with Counselor Durkey's mention of a community well. I think we really should be looking into that, because sometimes when you have your own control, it's a little bit easier to deal than having to deal with another entity. That's my comment.
CAO, Victoria, and then Lauren.
If you recall, in the fall of 2018, a group of municipalities met with Minister Porter at the NSFM annual meeting, and we talked about a joint proposal. And so that proposal was developed and was approved by all of the participating municipalities in February of 2019, and it went off to Minister Porter. We had followed up two or three times during the calendar year of 2019. And recently, I had another letter drafted, and it will be going to Minister Porter asking for an update on, on our request, because it does speak to creating some points of access to water in other areas around, around the region, not just in our municipality, but around the region.
Hey, Lauren?
Yes, thank you again, Mr. Chair. Patty's idea was, is certainly valid, and some of the other comments that are, that are out there, and I'll have to go along with John's version of the KISS, keep it simple, and I'm going to use the other one. But as I mentioned, Lake George has lots of water. I don't expect to get free water from, from the town. I expect that we should pay for it, no problem. But then you've got to think about, if you drill a well, is it going to be sufficient, will there be enough water, sufficient, sufficient amount of water to serve the purpose that we are looking at? Number two, John brought it up, about the testing that has to be done all the time, every six months or whatever the case is, or anything. Well, the town already does this. If we want to be cooperating with our, our sister municipalities, here's a great way to do it. I don't expect to get water free. I expect us to pay for it, but it's to help our citizens, and let's try to keep the cost as, as reasonable as possible. You know, it's going to cost a lot to drill a well. I mean, you just can't draw, drill a well that's, it's going to maintain a single household. You've got to drill a well that's going to maintain hundreds of households, perhaps. So there's a lot of ifs there. Whereas Lake George has lots of water, let's work with the town, let's draw some type of, some type of formula that we can pay for. We don't, I don't expect to get it for nothing. That's for sure. But I think we have the, the opportunity here to work with the town, to purchase their water when these drugs occur.
Was there any further discussion? Go ahead, Gerard. You're muted.
Like, like Waymouth, they have a, a spring, spring water right next to the road. We have one in, in Pleasant Valley here. I don't know how accessible it is and how good it is. Maybe John knows if it's still used or not, I don't know. But could we find out who, who owns the land there? Could we get a, a right-of-way or something to find out if it's good enough to, to have something built there? Because it used to be, a lot of people were using that at one time, I know that. I don't know if John knows more about that than, go ahead.
Where was that spring again, Counselor?
It was in, in, in Pleasant Valley. And?
It's on the Holly Road.
Is it still used, John?
Yes, a lot of people still use it, but it's not tested. It's actually just a pipe sticking in the ground.
Oh, yeah, I, I realize that, yeah.
You see, there, there's a couple of things, when, on, if people go to a well like that or to a spring like that and get water, and they put it in their jugs, take it home and they drink it, and they go back, if they don't disinfect their, their jugs, and they get sick, and if the municipality has, I won't say sponsored it, or said there's a, an area in, in Pleasant Valley on the Holly Road, I don't know what can happen insurance or legal-wise. People go, well, municipality said there was a, a place where you could get water on the Holly Road. I don't know if we would be legally responsible or not, and so on. If people go on their own, if they know it's there, that's a different situation, because we have an appetite, be very careful when it comes to a lot of well. A lot of towns used to have wells, and they had to get away from them because of infection and, and so on purposes. But to have staff investigate into the looking, looking into a well, the size you'd need, what it would cost, et cetera, I, I think that's appropriate. Counselor Cunningham, go ahead.
All right, I, I would tend to agree with Counselor Cushing's comment that, you know, we have a water provider, we partner with the town to provide all, all kinds of water to all kinds of residents for charge. Having said that, I think we should first try to exercise that option. If we're not able to satisfactorily service our communities with the town water system, which also is here in the then we may look at, then we may look at something else in terms of our own well. Having said that,
Having said that, the issue with our own well is, is, is that, is it just going to be at one site, multiple sites? We're a very, very large municipality. I mean, if it were in Hebron, that may not be useful for somebody in Pleasant Valley. If it's in Pleasant Valley, it may not be that useful for somebody who's in Hebron. So in Kemp or Kemp or wherever else. So in any event, I, I think we should also add to the task, let's try to get something solved with the town that people can use first. And then if not, maybe we could let some other options that council might mull over.
Thank you. Deputy Warden, then Victoria, and then Patty.
Yeah, and, and that comes to the question, it's all about the, the, keep it simple. I do know that it's roughly $4 or $5 per token and that would get you 250 gallons. I guess my question would be is get the staff to find out actually how much it costs per, per gallon of water. And maybe a, a system set up where, where we could control that and pretty well do the same. Because right now, the big issue is, is due to the COVID-19 restrictions. The town has no plans at this time to open up the dispensary out in the Breton, South Ohio area. Now, we would have a little bit more control over that. And plus having a, a second, a place to, to access water would, would, sometimes when you go there in the summer in the middle of a drought, like a drought we had a couple of years ago, it was very busy there and it was almost like a traffic jam there. So lots of people lined up, lots of businesses. This water is not only used for drinking. I know a lot of people use it just for flushing their toilet or putting it in their, their camper for, for washing dishes. It seems like that. But sometimes when you have only one access point, it, it becomes quite difficult. So maybe we should be just looking at a second access point where we have a little bit of control over and just finding out how much it actually costs for a gallon of water from, from the, the water utility as of now. We, we could go from there because that, that might be a little bit simpler and cheaper setup. Because we all know that the town, the water story, the water utilities water is tested and, and it's safe to drink.
Okay, Victoria, and then Patty.
So this has been, this has been a very interesting conversation. And I've recorded a number of ideas that we'll, we'll do some, some comparison on a high level just to kind of see where we land. I mean, the legislative framework around a municipality providing safe drinking water to its residents is very particular. It's, it's, I mean, Raymond can probably speak a little bit to how careful you have to be legally in terms of protecting people's safety. You know, there will be a huge education piece on the part of staff in terms of, you know, what's the U A R B environment and what's the regulatory environment, you know, if we step into that. And I say all that to say this. Typically in Canada and in Nova Scotia, rural municipalities are fairly removed from the provision of municipal drinking water. And, you know, while we have a suburban population who happens to buy services from the town of Yarmouth Water Utility, that, that we're, we're even removed from that. And so, you know, I, I'm, I want to be clear in what I'm hearing from you is that, that council, while they want to be part of a solution, we're clear that, you know, it, it would be virtually impossible for us to provide drinking water across the municipality.
Go ahead, Counselor Durkey. You have the floor.
Thank you. I completely agree with our C A O in that, quite frankly, it's up to the residents who have chosen to live in our municipality knowing that where they, if they choose to live further away from town, that they have to be responsible for their own water source. And therefore, if there's some major concerns about their own water source and that's responsibility of a property, property owner to ensure that they have proper water supply. And, and not just that, is to maintain it and test it. Because that, that we know is a huge issue across Nova Scotia, probably across Canada, that, that, you know, you need to test your water to make sure it's safe to drink. That being said, I'm glad that we've opened the door to some discussion about for, you know, for emergency purposes when people are involved in a drought in some regard, that, that, you know, we're looking into some options to provide some safe drinking water for people. But again, I can't say it enough. People have to be responsible for their own water and, and that does, that means testing and conservation if, if our, if we are faced with a, with a drought. So, thanks.
I'm trying to think that. Was there any further question? No, I can say done, John. Go ahead, Victoria.
Just, just one more comment as we wrap up this topic. Interestingly enough and funnily enough, back when Nova Scotia was organized into municipal government, the township of Yarmouth included what is now the town and the municipality. And it was over the provision of water that caused the split and created the town of Yarmouth to incorporate.
Done a little research, eh? Okay, I guess that's no further discussion. Staff have been given direction. We go from there. Item number 10, was there any other business of council? Anybody have anything you thought of that? If not, then I guess I would look for a motion to go in camera.
Mr. Warden, actually, it's a motion to adjourn committee of the whole and then we'll have a council meeting.
Okay, so...
Sorry about that.
A motion to adjourn the committee of the whole. Trevor, so move?
So move.
So move. Seconded by Counselor Allen. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye.